Good, Rob?
All right.
This, 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 this.
Good, Rob? All right. Cell phone. All right. I'm gonna call the meeting to order. October 1st, 2020 City Council Meeting. Suzanne.
Thank you. Mayor Carr.
Here.
Mayor Proten LaBar.
Here.
Councilmember Case.
Here.
Councilmember Neil.
Here.
Councilmember Pat.
Here.
Councilmember Zuluaga.
Good evening.
Thank you. If everybody would rise and do the pledge of allegiance with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
America, we love you. Thank you. We have some ceremonies, presentations, appointments. And the first one is presentation of years of service awards by Kip Wiley and Robin Brown to Mark Mackel and Larry Waters. They barely squeaked by with some tenure here.
Barely, barely. Good evening, council. It's my pleasure tonight to introduce to you, some of you, if you haven't met Larry, and recognize Larry for quite a few years of service with the city. So Larry's start date was actually yesterday, September 30th, but 1985. So three and a half decades.
How old were you, Kip?
So, I was seven. Sorry, Larry. I'm gonna go through a little bit of history, talk about Larry a little bit, and introduce him, or bring him up here, so you can, you can stay put for now. I'll make you stand up here for the next hour. So, all right. September 30th, 1985, Larry started with the city of Woodland Park. At that time, I think his rate of pay was $7 an hour. He started in the streets department and worked his way into utilities. So basically, three months after he started in streets, he became a member of the utilities department and worked at the old lagoons, both the north and the south side of town. Larry has a lot of stories in regards to those lagoons. In 1988, he started the new field services division. That's with the distribution and collection systems. And then in 1992, he actually started and implemented the startup for the wastewater treatment plant when that was initially built. As you're all aware, we just expanded that plant a couple of years ago, so it's already in its second phase. In 1996, he switched from wastewater and over to the water department and started up the water treatment plant, our existing water treatment plant, that was put into service in 1997. Some other key points, he's been the chief water operator at the water treatment plant for the last 24 years. He has overseen construction of the reservoir that's up there. Obviously, the wastewater plant, the water plant, the North Well Field expansion in 2002. Larry is hoping that we'll get our new reservoir built before he decides to depart, and I'm very hopeful of that as well. He's been through a lot with the city. Boyle orders, lots and lots. If you want history, you go to Larry. Sometimes I think he knows where every valve is, every property shut off, so. Long time. Under his tenure at the water treatment plant, he's had 12 operators, and he's been there for 24 years. So it's pretty impressive. Of those 12, nine have achieved their A certification, which is the highest level certification in water treatment. Interesting fact, Larry got his A license, it was 1997, February 28th. Not that this is about me, but that's my birthday, too. So, and I graduated high school that year.
Which year?
Larry actually brought this one up. I like this. 910 pay periods, 26 pay periods a year. He's been here for 910 pay periods. A little bit about Lara. Larry, Larry and his patient wife, Letitia, have raised two boys in Woodland Park, and they're doing very well. Larry's also known for his cooking. He likes to smoke meat, and it's very good. Also, he's known for his smile around City Hall. He always comes in with a smile. It's greatly appreciated. Thank you, Larry. Larry's been a big influence in my success at the city. Obviously, he's been here the whole time. He's taught me a lot. Larry's a very, very good communicator. He's very good at finding efficiencies as well, and teacher. He's taught me a lot, so thank you, Larry. Words I would use to describe Larry, I could pull out a thesaurus and bore you, but the one that comes to mind, first and foremost, hardworking, honest, trustworthy, and so on and so forth. So Larry, you wanna join me real quick? So Larry, thank you. Three and a half decades, 35 years, that's pretty impressive in any place. Public service, first and foremost, is his motto. Customer service, I can't thank you enough. So the last time Larry was at council being recognized was in 1999.
Wow.
So it's been a little while, but thanks for coming back.
Sure.
So the city's got some things for you here, and the mayor has some things for you as well. Thank you. Thank you for 35 years. I couldn't do it without you. This is the man you want in charge of your water system. I'll just tell you that right now, through and through, hands down. So, thank you, Larry.
You're welcome. Appreciate it.
I'm gonna give you a very special token of gratitude. I have new challenge coins in the city, and there's only a few of them out there. So I appreciate your service, tremendous service, and excellent job with water, and so.
Good clean water. Yeah, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Larry.
Well, council mayor, it's been a great honor, the 35 years, to serve this community. Raised two boys, and my wife has put up with a lot with me over those years of being on call, 2 o'clock in the morning, leaving the house, being gone for 48 hours, getting back. But during that process, the city allowed me, and my boss, Jim Schultz, and Kip, allowed me to attend every party from kindergarten all the way through. First one I missed was a kindergarten, a Christmas party. Jim Schultz rent me a new one, and from there on, I never missed another one. Never missed a ballgame, was a coach for 15 years for the kids up here. We enjoyed the parks back when they were dirt, clear up to where we are now at the Panther Field and all that. The baseball team has contributed a lot to all that along the way. And this community, and the parking wreck services, and everything that we've had has contributed a lot to my, my boys and our family, raising them with ethics and values, learning to win, learning to lose, the values of that, because there's an important value in each end of those. Whether you're winning or losing, there's values all the way through it. And today, they both have graduated college, first out of our families ever to do that. On both sides, they are doing well for themselves, very successful young men, married within five weeks last year of one another. That was a ride in itself, and you know, they're, they're contributing to society. And that all goes back to the community and everything this community had to offer. And we feel very valued to be able to raise our boys in this community, and what it has to offer, from the city to the schools, to the playground they have around us. So anyway, thank you for giving us the monies that we need to do the things we need to do that makes me look good along the way, to have that funding there. It's not without the help of others that are amongst us here. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Larry.
Thanks, Larry.
Darren, before we go, are, we have a 17, are we, our capacity issue?
Yeah, we're close, very close. Yeah.
Just wondering.
There'll be a mass departure soon.
Yeah. Let's get through the next presentation. Yes, don't breathe, no one breathe.
I think we have one more presentation. There we go. Thank you.
Good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Robin Brown. In case any of you don't know, I'm your city engineer and deputy director of public works. It's my pleasure to be here tonight to introduce you to Mark Mackel. If you don't know him, he is our fleet's crew chief. I invite you to join me in honoring him and thanking him for his 25 years of service to the city and our community. 25 years is a long time, and it seems to fly by. I had a friend recently post on Facebook a meme that said, "It's interesting that the year 2000 was 20 years ago, because the 1980s were 20 years ago, too." So, so I think that's just a testament to how time flies. So if you're good at math, then you know that 25 years ago was 1995. I'd like to take a moment just to remind you of a few notable events from that year. In January, Nancy Kerrigan was attacked outside the ice rink in Detroit. In March, Schindler's List swept the Oscars. In April, Kurt Cobain and Richard Nixon both passed away. May brought the opening of the Channel Tunnel, connecting Britain to the European mainland, and Nelson Mandela was inaugurated as South Africa's first black president. Fun one, OJ Simpson in June took the Los Angeles police on his famous white Franco ride. Interestingly, in July, Jeff Bezos founded Amazon, and the movie Forrest Gump came out. August brought Major League Baseball players' longest strike in history. In September, the TV show Friends debuted. But more importantly, the week after Labor Day, Mark Mackel started working for the city as a mechanic for fleet maintenance. A couple other ones, October brought Netscape Navigator, which was the precursor to Google, in case you guys remember that. In November, at the ripe old age of 45, George Foreman became the oldest heavyweight boxing champion. Now, bless you, now he's a millionaire with his grill. And finally, in December, Sony launched the first PlayStation ever. So lots of things have happened since 95, but to put Mark's life in perspective and all of that, here's a little more about him. So Mark joined the Army in 1975 as a vehicle repairer and wrecker operator. In 1979, the year I was born, he became the shop foreman for the wheeled and tracked vehicles repair shop. About five years later, he became an instructor for preventative maintenance for wheeled and tracked vehicles, and then he finished out his career in the Army as the maintenance supervisor for wheeled and tracked vehicles, retiring in 1995. Also in 95, he was awarded Automotive Service Excellence ASE certification as both Master Automobile Technician and Master Medium Heavy Duty Truck Technician. So you can see, Mark was not lacking in experience when he joined the city of Woodland Park. Mark hasn't been in as many departments as Larry. He joined fleet maintenance and stayed with fleet maintenance. He started as a mechanic, and then two short years later, he became the crew chief. A position he's excelled in since that time. Um, Mark has only had nine mechanics work for him in his 25 years, which I think is a testament to his style of leadership. The fleet has almost doubled in size since he started with the city, going from about 65 vehicles to close to 100. I asked Mark earlier this week, what was the most exciting thing that has happened to you during this tenure with the city? And he responded quickly, the two fires. During those times of crisis, Mark demonstrated his dedication to the community and the service, and his service to the city by going around town and knocking on doors, making sure citizens were notified of the danger and evacuated as needed. I would describe Mark as friendly, intelligent, competent, hardworking. He's a pleasure to work with. In his time away from work, Mark enjoys hunting and ice racing. With that, I invite you to join me in thanking Mark for his 25 years of service to the city of Woodland Park. Mark, would you come up here?
Mark, thank you very much for your service.
Thank you.
Excellent service. We also have a challenge coin for you. These are, like I say, they're very special. Unlike mayor's pins, everybody in town's got one of those.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thanks to Larry, I feel like a newbie. Mayor, council, yes. I'd like to thank all the people that I've worked for, David Butterey, Bill Allspock, and the city council, or the council, or city managers. And I'm at a loss for words, I don't, I don't speak well in public, so it's basically it, sorry. Thanks, Mark.
Just like to add real quick, both gentlemen are a staff of three. They both go on call every third week, and they've been doing that for a very long time. They're all about community, and they help in every situation, and I'm very grateful for both of them, and our community is as well. Thank you both.
Thank you, Kip. Appreciate that. We're down to additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda. We're gonna make a small change. We're gonna bring 9A, which is the liquor license, up to right after 7. Unfinished business, so it'll be 7A.
I think we skipped 3B.
Oh, I'm sorry. I wasn't looking at the, so never mind. 3B, Jeff Smith, alternate member of the board of review to a permanent member, Suzanne.
Thank you, Mayor Carr. This is a very simple item that needs council approval. Jeff Smith, as you all know, is an alternate member on our board of review, and there's an opening for a permanent member, and he would like to move into that slot. It just needs a council approval. I believe Jeff's here. Where is he? Nope, is Jeff out there? Okay, Jeff's not here.
I don't see him. Council, any discussion before I entertain a motion? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to appoint Jeff Smith from an alternate member of the board of review to a permanent member.
I'll second.
Thank you. Suzanne.
Thank you, Carr.
Yes.
Case.
Yes.
LaBar.
Yes.
Neil.
Yes.
Pat.
Yes.
Zuluaga.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Now we're at item four, additions, deletions, and corrections to the agenda. Sorry, my eyes are not doing well tonight. And we're going to move 9A with the council's concurrence up after 7 to get these people out of hearing a little bit earlier. Any objections, council? Thank you. All right. With that change, we'll go to the consent calendar. Suzanne.
Thank you, Mayor Carr. This evening, on the consent calendar, we have three sets of minutes. We have the approval of the September 3rd special meeting minutes, the September 10th special meeting minutes, and the September 17th regular city council meeting minutes.
If any council wanted to remove one for discussion, I'd like to hear it now. If not, we'll move on. Seeing no motions, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the September 3rd special meeting, the September 10th special meeting, and the September 17th regular council meeting minutes, as written.
I'll second.
Thank you. Suzanne.
Case.
Yes.
LaBar.
Yes.
Neil.
Yes.
Pat.
Yes.
Car.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. We're in the public comment on items not on the agenda, part of the agenda. And Mr. Weaver, you've signed up. If you'd like to come forward and identify yourself in your municipality, I'd appreciate it. Oh, except you're here for 8B, right? I'm sorry. Seeing no other public comment, anybody else have any public comment not on the agenda? See if we got anybody online. I don't see any, so we'll move on to unfinished business. There's none, and now we're at 9A, except it's 7A, which is approval of a new tavern liquor license. I'll let Suzanne read the whole citation.
Okay. Thanks, Mayor Carr. If council's wondering why the audience is... If council's wondering why the audience is so packed, this is a fun item that we have on the agenda this evening. As a lot of you may know, Ms. Mike, so Pamela Mike sell is there in the audience and she will come up to the podium to speak to you about the new venture she's going on, going, embarking on. But what we'd like this evening is council to approve a liquor application from 110 Reserve LLC, doing business as 110 Reserve LLC. This is located at 110 Midland Avenue. Most of you will know it by where Colorado Gear Lab is. And Colorado Gear Lab is moving their business to another location and this tavern will be going into that location and the courtyard that's in front of it. The liquor license was brought to the city in a timely manner. The applicant has a current sales tax license. The applicant's eligible to apply for the liquor license and the location is eligible to be licensed. The owner, as I said earlier, is Pamela Mike cell and she's doing business as 110 Reserve LLC. Possession of the property is documented by deed. Ms. Mike cell is the owner of the building. The application came to the city clerk's office on September 3rd. The property was posted on September 14th. Public notice was published on the city's website. The character of the applicant is not an issue for this hearing. The operation of this business is in compliance with local zoning, building, and fire regulations, and all applicable fees have been paid. A petition proving the needs and desires of the neighborhood containing the signatures of 30 residents in support of granting this liquor license has been received. So the recommendation is that, following the public hearing, any public comment hearing from Ms. Mike cell herself, we would ask that council approve this liquor license.
Thank you, Suzanne. Pamela, you can come up and try to explain how you got this interesting business name. I'm sure we can't guess, among other things, please.
So just the name itself, 110 Reserve derives from 110 West Midland Avenue.
I was just kidding, but yes.
I thought it was wine.
Do you have a presentation or would you like?
I just need you to say you're good to go and.
Very good. Council, any, any comments, any inputs?
I want to, I want to hear all from your support team.
I know. And I have them out in the hallway, too.
Bring them on.
So what, what I'm doing is I have a fabulous courtyard at 110 West Midland, otherwise known as the Woodland Square. Now that my one tenant is out and I don't have wagons all in my courtyard, I would like to utilize it the way that it should be. It's going to bring, I feel it will bring lots of sales tax revenue into Woodland Park. It's a nice landing spot for tourists as they're walking from one end to the other end. It's a nice landing spot for people to, to sit down. The view is fabulous. So I am intending on doing a beer garden and that's what I'm planning on doing. I've done a lot of work to the courtyard. I've also been doing a lot of remodeling to the inside, new flooring, new paint. So Woodland Square is, is not an eyesore anymore.
Thank you. Council, anything?
I just want to say I saw you out there with the, I think, a roller on, on the ground and you guys were out there working really hard and it's, it's really nice. I'm excited for you.
Yeah, I take a lot of pride in, in bringing Woodland Park a nice area. My neighbor, John, wherever he is, there he is, there's John. And he's been helping, he added the patio lighting. He's, he has been also making his area beautiful as well. So he's done some painting, so we're working really hard to, to really rejuvenate that part of Woodland Park.
Thank you.
Yeah, we're looking forward to getting out of this COVID thing and, and new opportunities for us locals to go.
Drinking.
Well, yes. Any other comments?
Socialize.
What do, what are you doing through the winter for heat and ability to sit down in the beer garden?
Better put a coat on. And that's all to, to be determined. This is early on in the stages. My tenant is still there, Gear Lab, and so I'm working with the engineer and we're coming up with different ideas right now. Does that help you? Wear a coat.
Thank you, council.
Irish beer.
Okay, I'll, I'll put that on my list.
I don't see any other council inputs, so we'll turn this to the public hearing. And offer any public comment. I would say before we get to that, though, that if you have something unique to add, I would welcome you to come up if it's just a hurrah, hurrah, same thing. You heard it before somebody, please go ahead. I will remind you that it's rare that we don't welcome these kind of opportunities, but I would welcome any other public comment at this time. Seeing.
Thumbs up.
Yeah. Seeing none, I'll close the public comment. You have an opportunity to rebut the public comment. We'll skip that part. Any final questions from council? Seeing none, I'd offer to encourage a motion from council.
I move that the city council approve and the new tavern liquor license for 110 Reserve LLC, DBA 110 Reserve LLC, located at 110 Midland Avenue, Woodland Park, Colorado.
Thank you. I'll second.
Thank you, Suzanne.
Labar.
Yes.
Neil.
Yes.
Path.
Yes.
Zuluaga.
Yes.
Carr.
Yes.
Case.
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries unanimously.
Congratulations.
Needing grand opening.
Ooh, that was close. Thank you, we'll give a minute or two to clear the room. Doesn't want to stay.
Excellent.
Let some other people come in. In the meantime. All right. The next is an ordinance on initial posting and it's a QJ, so I will read the following. Council members use electronic devices to access, access the materials relevant to the public hearing before us. Be assured that as a common practice of the city council, that these devices are not being used for texting, emailing, or other communications during public hearings. The first item is from Sally Riley, a presentation on ordinance 1384, extension, any, anybody? Okay, I just wondered if anybody had anything else to say. Begone.
So for the record, council member Labar is recusing herself.
Yes, thank you. Planning director.
Thank you, Mayor Carr. This is a co-proposed code amendment that primarily addresses single-family use in multifamily zones. And at our last meeting, you decided to table this to this meeting.
I thought we were doing the U-Haul.
Yeah, we're.
Oh.
But whatever you'd like to do.
You're good, stay.
Yes.
I'm sorry. This is an ordinance 1384 that relates to the U-Haul conditional use permit located at 19251 East Highway 24 with a legal description of Lot 1, Aspen Acres. The owner of the property is Mr. Pete Labar, High Country Real Estate Holdings LLC in the Community Commercial Zone. And this is the first reading of the ordinance and the purpose is to set the public hearing for October 15th. The essence of this is that the original conditional use permit had a condition for the property owner to repair the existing parking lot that was supposed to have been done by the end of last year, December 31st, 2019. Mr. Labar has requested that it be extended to June 30th, 2021. So being on first reading, that is the extent of my description.
Yes, thank you. As council knows, we typically don't do a lot on initial posting, but if you'd like to have some comments at this time, I'd welcome a few brief comments, but normally on initial posting, we're just seeing if we can put it through to the public hearing. But any comments from the council?
I just want to confirm the timeline because it seems a little funny. The, the original conditional permit, the suspense was December of 2019 and the reason stated was COVID, correct?
Actually, it's because they are planning to bore a water line underneath the highway and that project has been delayed. And the boring of this water line is going to need to be done from the parking lot, which is going to undermine the existing asphalt. And they would like to do the repairs after the water line boring is complete.
I don't see that stated in this anywhere.
I was going to say, that's not the rationale provided in the document. That's why I was confused with the timeline, Sally. And maybe the paperwork just needs to be corrected a little.
I think I can have the applicant expand on that.
I might add a question to that if I could. Is, is there, is it delay because of the contractor who is supposed to do it? Is it a seed out delay? What's the nature of the delay? I don't know if it's real clear, just you're saying it's delayed.
It's not very clear to me why they have not moved forward. At first, they were having difficulty finding the water line and the depth. We have not seen the design of this yet. And so it does say that the parking lot repair and striping delay is the result of the originally intended plan to bore through the parking lot under Highway 24. So it is in the paragraph number two.
Any other council to be recognized by the chair?
Thank you. I, I do. I do.
Council members.
So another question I have is, is it customary to have a timeline on this and then nine months or eight months, nine months later to come in and ask for an extension? Is that pretty common in the city or the planning department?
Mr. Labar and I spoke about this at the deadline at the end of last year. He thought that he could possibly get it done in six months. So I said, fine, let's see how you proceed. He was unable to accomplish that, so I requested the formal extension.
Council member, you.
Could, could we go back and ask Mr. Labar just to clarify the two sentences? The one that says the delay is based on what you're saying, the bore through the parking lot. Can consolidate or reconcile it with the sentence that says the delay in this project is due to various COVID-related activities? Thank you.
All right, so in terms of process, if I could interject briefly, we're not having the public hearing this evening. These are all questions that certainly we can make sure are ready and, and briefed in the interim. Please keep your mind, open mind as, as to the, the issues and not, don't make any decisions in advance. And also provided this evening on the table file was an email that we received yesterday. So that can, you can have that for your preparation in that meeting and I would inform the community, if you have any additional comments or otherwise, please direct them to the planning department. So that way our council members don't have to potentially recuse themselves from ex parte communications. If you have questions, please send them to Sally so that we can include them for all of council in a proper process.
Thank you, sir. Yes, I will reiterate that if we have any more questions of clarification, I welcome the council to send them to the planning director and she can be prepared when we go to full public hearing. With that, I would accept a motion.
I'll move to approve the first reading of ordinance 1384. Series 2020 is requested and presented this evening and set the public hearing for October 15th, 2020.
Thank you, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Suzanne.
Neil.
Yes.
Path.
Yes.
Zuluaga.
No.
Carr.
Yes.
Case.
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries for one.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now we're going to go get Hillary.
Hillary. Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you. We're at 8B and we're going to consider ordinance 1383. There's been some discussion and some meetings with council. I'm going to let Sally Riley give us the details, but we're probably going to defer this till the public hearing on November 5th, I believe. But I'll let her give some more details.
Thank you, Mayor Carr. This is the amendment to the zoning code that relates to single-family in the multifamily zones. And on September 17th, it was tabled to this date with the expectation of setting the public hearing for November 5th. In the meantime, we have had discussions among the city council. And by the way, this is a legislative item, so that's perfectly acceptable as you contemplate modifications to the zoning regulations. And at this point, there is not a majority consensus of the direction to move in. Couple of you are quite comfortable with eliminating the single family in the multifamily zones altogether. And then some of you are comfortable with keeping multifamily projects as a permitted use by right. Others are not. So as a result, if we don't have a majority consensus, it is best to table this again on first reading and continue to discuss the options and provide direction to staff as to the final or the best draft that can be moved forward with a first reading. So that can be done on October 15th. Or if you would like, October 15th is a fairly lengthy meeting with budget hearings. So if you would like, we could delay the first reading until November 5th and then have the public hearing on November 19th.
Thank you. So I, I talked with the planning director and because of the variations in, in the substance of what was on the board from the draft, I, I promised her that I would talk with each one of you one-on-one and see if we can get any kind of blended presentation together. She's, she's. She's collated a lot of the inputs already and promised to get those to me, and then I'd have individual conversations and see see if, see if we can get to something that we can put on the agenda. I would suggest November fifth because of the October fifteenth is going to be very, very full, but I see the city attorney would like to weigh in.
I just wanted to clarify for the viewing public, when you say you met with counsel, you met with them either individually or two at a time in compliance with the Colorado Open Records and no opening meetings law. So rest assured, we're following the rules.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you for the clarification. If counsel's okay with that, I would like to suggest we move this to November fifth, but I'm open for discussion for anybody. Councilmember Labar. Mayor Pro Tem Labar, sorry.
I'm fine with moving it. So I think everybody already knows where I stand on the entire issue anyways, so.
Yeah, we will, of course, have a full public hearing whenever we have it, so.
I'm fine with moving it.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Pat.
Yeah, I'm fine. I'd already shaken my head, that's fine.
So we need a motion to do so.
I'll move to table. You're with me. Ordinance thirteen eighty four, series twenty twenty, is presented. Thank you. I'll move to table thirteen eighty three, series twenty twenty, as presented to the November fifth meeting for first reading.
I'll second that. Suzanne.
Pat.
Yes.
Zuluaga.
Yes.
Carr.
Yes.
Case.
Yes.
Labar.
Yes.
Neil.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Mr. Weaver, I'd welcome you to come up next time when we discuss this. Thank you. Thank you, sir. We're nine A. We took care of. We're at new business. There's nothing there. We're on to reports. I'm going to read this until we don't do it anymore. In our council procedures, we have reports of the mayor and council members. Reports of the mayor and council members shall be directly related to city business. Such reports may include, but are not limited to, requests for future agenda items, report on events or meetings of outside municipal boards or groups to which a council member has been assigned or appointed, announce community-wide events, introduce citizen concerns or inquiries about city services, or to make simple information requests that can be easily answered by city staff at the city council meeting or by later communication. Counsel should endeavor to give city staff advance notice of any staff requests made during these reports when possible. The mayor and council members shall not use this portion of the meeting to make political statements to rebut, respond to, or refute actions previously taken by the city council or to comment about or respond to the actions of or comments of a fellow council member. Mayor's report. Tomorrow, Friday, October second, twenty twenty, from nine to noon, Woodland Park will be participating in Creek Week, picking up litter and debris along Fountain Creek. Wednesday, October seventh, twenty twenty, City Council Candidate Forum hosted by the Chamber from five thirty to seven thirty P M. In the city council chambers, there's limited seating, but it will be available via Zoom. Check out the chamber's website for information. Tuesday, October thirteenth, twenty twenty, the Chamber Member one oh one class from ten A M. to eleven A M. at the Cultural Center. For more information, once again, contact the chamber. On Thursday, October fifteenth, twenty twenty, Beyond the Virus, Exploring and Responding to the Mental Health Impact of the COVID nineteen Pandemic. It's an eleven thirty A M. virtual meeting. Once again, contact the Chamber of Commerce for Zoom length and details. I have nothing new from my liaison reports.
I don't have anything for this evening. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to share with the community that today we lost a very active and lovely member of our community to death. The wife of Tom King, a former county assessor, lost his wife today, Sandy King, who is a dear friend of the library district, U. Pass Symphony Guild, and has been involved in many things in our community. And I just wanted to honor her this evening and share with the community the untimely loss of her. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's all I have.
Sandy was a friend. I didn't know that. I appreciate you mentioning that. Very sad to hear that. Thank you. Councilmember Neil.
I'll hold off on the Keep Woodland Park Beautiful results from this past weekend until our next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Pat.
I have nothing.
Councilmembers Zuluaga.
I have no reports from my liaisons.
Thank you. City Attorney's Report.
All right. So typically, I just make a joke at this point, but I'll try not to. The mayor asked me this morning, and so I wanted to kind of a public service announcement for counsel, but also the community. As you may be aware, there's a legal dispute between Andrew O'Mack Ministries and the county. And I just wanted to point out that the city's not involved in that, and we don't really have a way to, or we don't want to be involved in that. It's not our health orders. It's not our prerogative to be involved. So I know some of you may have been getting phone calls or other contacts asking the city to do something or asking about it, and it's not, it's not our legal issue. So I just wanted to throw that out there to the community. So if you have questions, you can direct them to the county or Andrew O'Mack Ministries as appropriate, but the city's not involved in that matter. I don't have anything further to add. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. City Manager reports.
Only thing I have tonight is just to provide an update on the CBRF applications for the city. We did, I do believe we received one or two today. I don't know whether the classification is and which program they're in. But we, as of Monday, we had twenty applications for businesses and seventeen for residents. And so it was likely one or two different as of today. The intent is to start reviewing all the applications that we have and that are fully documented next week and start that process and with the funding. So any subject to your questions. That's all I have.
Thank you. Seeing none. We are at the end of our regular meeting, and I will adjourn the regular meeting, and we will go next to a council work session. Can we have a small break for, to set up and things like that? How about eight o'clock, we'll reconvene? Thank you.
Congratulations, Larry and Mark.
Thank you. I'm gonna call the meeting back into order, but this portion is a work session. As such, we have different procedures for a work session and under council procedures. We will not take public comment during the business section, but right after that, anybody who wants to speak about the business or otherwise, after we're done with our agenda, that's that's up here is welcome to have any public comments. I appreciate that. I'm gonna hand it off to our city manager Darren Tangeman. He's got some excellent things to show us and I want to remind the council that we're trying to give guidance to this to the staff. That's really what we're here to do is give guidance to the staff. Past any we've already given. And so Darren, take it away.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I always reiterate tonight is one of our last chances to get feedback and guidance from council before. We have to finalize the draft budget and deliver it to city council on the fifteenth as per the charter. As a result, I wanted to touch on, you have the agenda in front of you, some of the stuff that we talked about this morning will go over. I have staff here to answer your questions. If you have questions specific to these issues. And so we'll we'll get go ahead and get started and give you a quick overview of the budget. Have Emily here also to to potentially go through any scenarios. Budget scenarios that you might have if based on some of your decisions, so we can know where we stand in terms of some of these fiscal goals that you have. If you decide to do something a little bit less in one area, how does it impact the rest of the budget? Okay, so starting with the budget work session, myself and Emily here. I want to touch but touch on the draft budget overview. As you know, we were given guidance to work on a flat budget for this year. I want to touch on a couple of things because I think it's important. Council guidance was a flat budget, but I will tell you as a result of some of our revenue projections, it was sorry.
Can we get these slides later possibly?
I certainly can. Can you see I'm trying to make this the font big enough so you can see it this time?
It's great. Thank you.
Not yes, I'll get those to you. The so this year are I want to I'm just gonna give approximate numbers, but in general. You can if you want to. Go ahead. The the twenty twenty general fund budget revenue projections are down from about from twenty nineteen by about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So that indicates that, you know, we would almost we would already have to have a flat budget under those circumstances. So it both council and the the result of our revenues impacted that decision to go to go with the flat budget. So thanks, Rob. Next taper mandates a balanced budget requiring so that so can't hit your revenues. Your expenditures can't exceed your revenues by taper. So that's another reason of taper mandate. And so I touched on those things. You have both council direction and the actual the cost Colorado constitution that mandates that we would have a flat budget under the current circumstances. Let me touch on a couple of other variables or factors that are that are impacting the flat budget. Inflationary increase in doing business without increasing expenditures requires us to reduce services to some degree in two thousand twenty one. Because, you know, like I said, the factors insurance, healthcare, utilities, chemicals, supplies and labor. I'd say labor, even without a pay increase, we actually have a mandate to increase our minimum wage this year by CPI. Because that's a requirement from state law, things we can't avoid. So these are things. These are things that we can't avoid that still increase our costs. So we have to absorb those if we don't have the same revenues that we had in the previous year. Just to yeah, I just tried to give a round number. Healthcare for us will increase by four point five percent. That's a that's actually pretty. We went out to market and I think we're feeling pretty good about that. That's it. So we're we're that's quite a bit lower than what we anticipated. And then I want to want to reiterate that, you know, this is a year where we're in under pretty certain special circumstances. With revenues down with COVID and the impacts to our local businesses. And so I want to make sure that we can make this happen and you're gonna be surprised by, I think, gonna be surprised with how we're able to achieve some of the fiscal goals that you had asked for, but I will say that that there's gonna be an impact if this were to go a second year and those things being you would see noticeably impacted services and staff retention in the next in twenty twenty two, if we were to continue down this road. So. Touch on so big. One of your big fiscal goals. UFBR unassigned fund balance reserve council asked us to go with a twenty five percent UFBR. What we can achieve, and I'll touch on a couple of these, a couple of these other variables that impact this is twenty six percent. That gives you a little bit of leeway. This is at the high end of twenty six percent. So I'll talk about that in a second. That gives us a two million three hundred ninety four thousand in unassigned fund and balance reserve, which is here for those economic or natural disasters, right, that we that we have to be able to continue to run the city. That's what that's there for. Tabor is also is not a part of this, but Tabor is a portion of that. That's three percent of your, I think it's of your expenditures. But let me just touch on where we stand as a city. As a city, the GFOA or Government Finance Officers Association's best practice is that we have a minimum sixteen point six seven percent or two months of of those revenues or expenditures, actually, it's of your of your general fund expenditures in your UFBR. And so we have, what's that? It's your rep. It's based on revenue. So two months of revenue, sorry. We actually have twenty six percent. So we're we're the city is has the city is has a very healthy UFBR. And so the decision that council needs to make is how much further do you want to take that or are you with this budget? Are you gonna be fine with this moving into the future? Okay, so that's that's another another thought. And maybe re divert your attention maybe wholly to debt service. Okay, capital debt service reserve you asked, and there's some debate about this, but I will say that there was a request. There was a there was a signaling to us that you were looking for between five hundred and seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to put towards that service. I know it's a it's a it's a priority goal for council. And so what we were able to do is come up with five hundred thousand dollars in the budget with with this flat budget. And so what we would recommend is, I mean, that's what we would be able to place into your debt service, your debt service reserve for a total of six hundred, because this year you placed a hundred thousand into that that reserve. So at the end of twenty twenty one, based on the draft budget right now, we can get to six hundred thousand dollars by the end of twenty twenty one. Total capital expenditures, this does include us moving forward with the capital expenditures that we proposed earlier to city council. So it's all three. So think about that. Okay. Three hundred seventy thousand in that, and I'll talk about what we'll talk about those in detail and ask council to prioritize those or give us a thumbs up if that's the direction you want to see those in in the draft or the the budget that I present on October fifteenth. This budget does not include salary increases for for twenty twenty one. I will just touch on a couple of things. CPI shows that between one to one point nine percent, the cost of living increase is occurring right now as of June so far in twenty twenty. If the city were to provide a one percent coal increase, it still could maintain a twenty six percent twenty six percent UFBR. It would reduce it by forty eight thousand, but it would still be in the twenty six percent range. I'm just throwing that out there. Obviously, two percent doubles that. So anywhere between one and two percent covers what is being lost through inflation in terms of cost of living. And if not approved by council, the council does, I would recommend revisiting the issue based on where they we are in terms of the economy after the first quarter of twenty twenty one. They're still moving up. So yeah, there's and they're moving up a little bit even gradually, even to the the most recent quarter now shows one point seven to two point five. So that was the numbers that we just had. Those just came out. I probably did they actually think today. Yeah. So those will keep on climbing, which may means our dollars buy less in Colorado. Okay, so let me go to the next slide. This and I'm gonna bring up Robin for this. To answer any questions you have, these are the five capital projects that we have on the on the list that encompasses that three hundred and seventy thousand dollars. I, you know, we have Sally here to talk about the comp plan and I can talk about the fiber build out. But the three top ones there are are true capital expenditures and I have Robin here to respond to any questions you have about those. And hopefully, city council can have can deliberate on these and figure out whether or not you want to fund all these. At least get it into the October fifteenth budget, right? And then if you need to make tweaks to it later, you certainly can. I think that's I don't want to say that you have to make a decision that's definitive, because you don't truly approve the budget until until December. So this is just a matter of allowing us to put it in the budget and show you what it means to city council at that point. Okay, so Robin? Yeah, all right.
Yeah, we appreciate that, because the impacts will be variable and aspirational, I think.
Okay, go ahead, Rob. All it is, all we're just gonna do is just, you know, brief what they are. And if we have questions about these, the intent is to get feedback from council to see if if you how you'd like to prioritize. Like I said, you can still meet all of your goals, your fiscal goals and be able to fund all five of these.
So the first one is the Ute Pass Cultural Center Fire Suppression System that was identified by Chief Lambert as a requirement for the building. We have one proposal currently that's just under ten thousand dollars for design of the system. The estimated cost includes design and construction of the system.
Mayor?
Oh, were you gonna go through all of them first?
I can, or I can answer. It might be easier.
I have a specific for that.
Okay.
Sure.
Do we have a copy of the fire marshal's actual requirement letter? I I'd like to see the language to see what kind of flexibility is in the letter.
I don't.
We we can get one from him for sure. So and then we can, if you want to, I mean, it's it's a soft letter, to be honest with you. It certainly can be a hard letter. So that's why we had flexibility to be able to spread the cost over two years, just to give you kind of an understanding. It has to be done at some point, but we've done the design this year to keep make it more cost effective or more cost efficient to the to the city. So we didn't have to encumber the entire amount. We were able to spread it across two two years. So it absolutely we can get you a letter. I don't know if we want to put the city in that position. If you're not gonna fund it, we could put the city in a pretty bad a pretty bad situation.
I just want to see what the flexibility is that the city has.
Yeah.
But to that point, have you bid this out or is it because a round number has been bid out or this is your your personal or internal estimation?
We have requested proposals from three companies. So we have one that's responded so far and we're waiting on two more proposals for design.
Yeah.
But you've you've kind of done an internal review to get your own engineering sort of estimate on what this might be or based on general standards. I mean, is this a out in the air number? I I'm just trying to see how I I understand why you got a round number, but I'm just saying how have you come to that conclusion?
As far as the construction, the overall cost, I understand. I I don't know the background on that. I don't.
The the we had been been actually reached out last year and got and got the number. The total amount was around a hundred thousand last year when he when he did the analysis, but the design and engineering obviously puts a more definitive number on that.
Sure.
And we're still waiting to complete the design and engineering. So this is just a it's a it's a number that's based on.
You've tried to shoot to the high.
We did. Yes, we did.
Yes, go ahead.
So I'm I'm a little unclear on how this has become a budget item. If you don't have a letter from the fire marshal that states its requirements, how did it get to be? The building, when was a building manufactured or created? It's steel construction. When when did that? When did the Ute Pass Cultural Center come to exist?
Good point. What's that?
Gymnasium for the school in the fifties, I believe, or something like that.
So what what I'm a little perplexed about is how this became such a and I watched it last year come on to be an item. And if we have nothing that that cites any requirement, any code, anything that's being causing it to rise to the level of this concern, I'm a little confused even now. You have, there's nothing in writing that says the fire marshal says this is important because of this code, that code, this, you know, requirement. So I'd I would like to see some of those clarifications before we even put it on as an as an item. It doesn't seem it's justified.
If you can trust staff, I will send you the letter. You'll get this. You'll get the letter from the fire marshal this week. So I'll get that to you.
So no, that what I'm trying to say is that there is no, as of now, there's no letter.
So I think I alluded to why.
I know, because of liability, whatever, but I get it. But we've but even to get it on the budget, this is what's concerned me for when I saw it come on to the horizon is we have nothing that that lays any foundation that we go, oh, yeah, that that's important. So if we can have some clarification of that.
I can get that for you. Right.
So I I'm gonna jump in here. I can imagine this is it may be fifty, maybe even forties, right, late forties.
Pretty old.
And so it's a wood building. It's a there's there's an agenda to enhance the use of it and with outside possibilities, the liability jeopardy is is strong. I can see where the fire suppression. I I recognize that it would be nice to have some documentation, but it's kind of a common sense thing at this point with with the old building and and fire suppression. I would welcome any input you've got, but I I kind of recognize common sense wise why we're doing this.
I just want to chime in real quick. There was an inspection done and in the inspection report, the suppression system is required. So you can either furnish the inspection or a letter.
The letter makes it up more hard. Exactly. That's correct. And the letter from the marshal will make it unequivocal that we have to get this done. So I'm trying to provide some flexibility to council, but if you need something definitive, we will have to do it.
But there is an inspection that does exist with it in writing, saying it is required.
Do you have the inspection?
Yes, we do. Just yeah, we can do that.
Start with that.
Sounds good.
And I might characterize these soft letters as pre precursors to harder letters as a typical standard. So I mean, it's when you got this old of a building. It's like the the fire. I don't think you need to confirm this.
Sure.
Saying the fire marshal is is very helpful, let me say, in letting us know the direction things are going, and it's better to take quicker action than to get the hard letter, which might also increase costs in the future for the actual project, potentially if it becomes something urgent. So yeah, I think I think it's sufficient. I just I think what Rusty's shared is his concern is just the way to get help us get some flexibility there.
I'll get the inspection for you. If that that works, we can do that. Okay.
Just wanted to add, council spent money on the cultural center in twenty nineteen for electrical improvements. That's when the fire marshal came in and we spent, I want to say it was around twenty or twenty five thousand to do the electrical improvements. And then this was this was part of that. So we're slowly getting there.
Thank you, Robin. Proceed if you will. Thank you.
So the next one is the cemetery road and grading expansion. We reached out to a couple of earthwork contractors to get some budgetary estimates on expanding the cemetery, just as far as some rough grading in of some roads. I think we only heard back from one. We heard back from one and his estimate was approximately sixty thousand dollars. I think we only heard back from one, we heard back from one, and his estimate was approximately sixty thousand dollars. So that's a rough grading of roads and a little bit of drainage.
Is this something we can do in-house?
I don't think we have the expertise to do it in-house.
I will touch on something Robin and I have talked about. The, this is really the most rudimentary, um, grading and road infrastructure we can put in place. There's going to probably be a portion where we have to allocate some of our own resources like gravel and, and some of, some things that we would take on ourselves. This is like the cheapest way we can do it in terms of, terms, and then come back in and, and make it more formalized. Is that, in a correct, correct assessment? Okay.
I can just add real quick, um, it's taking the material onsite, filling where we need to fill, cut where we need to cut. But it's rough because we don't have a survey done to know those exact details. So there probably is going to be some, some fill that's needed. Um, there's no asphalt. There's no road base. So, you know, bringing in gravel to, to, uh, treat the roadway will be needed in drainage as well. So it's very rough.
So pending a survey, which you hope doesn't put some graves in the middle of the proposed roadway, I guess this is your best guess at this point.
And real quickly, uh, once you put road base in, as steep as this hill is, from an engineering perspective, there's, there's a, a good way to be able to do drainage without having any future problems with runoff. Should we say get a major storm in or something like that? I mean, is that doable by your estimation without paving?
Engineers can figure out anything.
Well, and yeah, they can. But it is an awfully steep hill. So that's, that's why I'm, I'm just wondering if, if that decision's made. Not that I want to spend the extra money, but that, that decision's made, uh, because we really do rationally think that. I mean, you can get to a one, two percent grade, and you're not a problem, but this thing's a little bit more than that. That's why, that's why I'm curious. You, you guys feel confident about that?
Yes, we think it can be done. Um, there's a lot of surface water that already traverses the site, and so we'll continue that. And then the, the amount of impervious we, that'll be added will be compensated for to make sure we're not harming.
Mostly of a rock base and that sort of thing.
Go for it. Any other questions? On this one?
So the last one I'll talk about is HVAC upgrades to the police department. Their HVAC system was installed when the building was constructed in the early two thousands. And it's reached the end of its usable life. This was a project that was identified by Haynes Mechanical, which is, uh, our mechanical contractor that oversees all the buildings in the city. This was their highest priority, and, um, they estimate it cost out about sixty thousand dollars.
And they're going to throw in extra dirt for back behind buildings.
Yeah.
An incentive to get the business.
And some mints too. Maybe some pens.
That's really good of them. Thank you.
Suzie will make sure we get some, right? Anything else, counsel?
Anything on that one?
Thank you.
Thank you, Robin. Sally? Yeah, go ahead.
So you all know that, uh, the comprehensive plan was budgeted for two thousand and twenty, so this is not a new expenditure. It's a carryover since we're not spending the funds this year and that there is a fifty fifty match of fifty thousand dollars from DOLA. And this is an expenditure that will last for ten years. So basically, it's a five thousand dollar expenditure from the taxpayers of Woodland Park for the next ten years.
And I didn't complete the description there. We got cut off when I squeezed it. So the, the, what I wanted to say is that the grant is still good into next year to the, for, for the comprehensive plan until the end of the fiscal year, right?
Yes.
Carry forward. Good. Okay, thanks.
That's what I want, that's what I wanted to confirm.
Yeah.
Thanks. Any questions for Sally? Again, there's no need to make, the intent is not to make a decision on the comp plan today. It's just intended to bring it into budgets, and you can, you can deliberate on it further in the year.
Yeah, we, so, uh, a reminder, counsel, I know Darren already said this, sorry, we're using first names. But, uh, we're, we're given guidance and, uh, and once we get a formal budget, we'll see all the numbers flush out. And we can have further discussion on those things. Thank you.
All right, last thing. A, as you know, one of the capital projects that we had last year was a server installation. That's pretty close. It's, it's about three to five months from completion. And then the intent is that we will have, um, funding that will be available to us that we can put right back into the fiber build out, complete the fiber build out for the city. And that's where this fifty thousand dollars comes from. So the fifty thousand dollars is a portion of that, of that contract that we can put towards, um, towards fiber build out. It will include other stakeholders within the community. It will include a large DOLA grant that will help us fund a portion of this. Again, and I think Mayor Carr has been in tune with this, this initiative, uh, from the beginning. And he could probably elaborate on it as much as I can, but, uh, it really provides the city in a, puts in a city in a position to be self-sufficient for a couple of decades into the future, um, in terms of its own broadband destiny. So I don't know if you want to elaborate on that.
Yeah, I, I know I've said this before, but this, uh, this amount of money will be coming back twenty fold in potential. And, uh, this, uh, by the way, uh, we've talked about this in one of the past meetings. This is probably going to be fifty thousand carrying over for a couple of years to keep going with the intention of the, of the build out. Uh, and these hubs that we're going to end up with will be PPP opportunities. And, uh, because we're not going to get in the utility business more than we already have. But this, this will be some tremendous opportunities to, to put, uh, some really high power broadband everywhere in the town. And hopefully, I'm, I'm hopeful that it brings in more soft business, which, uh, typically will bring, uh, families and some, uh, other professionals that some of us here in the Deus have been involved with in the past. So I think it's, I, I, I'm not trying to do a sales pitch, but I think it's a tremendous opportunity for the community. And I appreciate you bringing this forward.
Any other questions on those five items? All right, man, I'll let you deliberate if, where you think this is three hundred and seventy thousand dollars in total. Like I said, um, the fiscal, uh, goals that you wanted to achieve, five hundred thousand dollars in terms of the debt service reserve added twenty six percent above the twenty five percent requested. A flat budget is already there. So, um, this still meets all those goals, and you can do all five of these as well. So.
Thank you. I, I'll go around and round robin order here with, starting with Mayor Pro Tem, uh, to any comments or discussions on his capital projects.
I'm fine with all of them.
Any order change you'd like to see?
No.
Okay. Ms. Case, Kelly?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I'm good with them all. Thank you.
Rusty?
I want to see some additional information on the first one, and I'm, um, not in favor of the comprehensive plan at this point in time.
Okay. Jim?
I'm with Rusty.
That's a trifecta. Robert?
That's a trifecta. I'm with Rusty.
For planning purposes, um, I would, I would suggest that, um, despite the fact that Suzanne and I think that cemetery should go number one. I'm going to suggest that of all the priorities, maybe we move it around, but it's not really a fall on your sword sort of thing. Um, I think we've got, um, things like fire suppression and HVAC that kind of bubble to the top for, uh, a lot of the employees and our liability situation, but, um, I'm, I'm fine with, uh, them. Now, we will have further discussions on each of these items when we come to the, uh, the, the planning for, uh, on October fifteenth, we'll get the first pass at the city manager's budget, and, uh, we'll, we can have further discussion on there.
I just would like to say that I've, in my personal opinion, I find the top three to be of equal priority.
Jim?
I might add too, to be, since this is for, uh, the city, the, the staff's ability to do things. I'm, I, I want to clarify what I said. I am with Rusty, but I'm not going to be particularly concerned if it ends up all the way at a hundred thousand dollars. I just want to check it. So just FYI.
And I'll get you that. I definitely want to get you that info.
Because I think, I think when you get, when you get a letter like that, you might as well consider it a hard letter.
Thank you. I, I, you understand where I'm coming from. Thank you.
Seen it too many times.
And, and I only have one other question. Actually, these numbers are total three twenty, don't they? Because, I mean, uh, yeah, three twenty because you're adding fifty, which is a DOLA.
Well, we count the revenue. So it's, it's, it is, yeah, you're right. But when you go out to the public or you talk to the, to, the, the press, it's, it's fifty thousand dollars, uh, because it's not, it's not the rev, it's DOLA revenues that are coming into the city in terms of, you're talking about the comp plan, right? Yeah. So, uh, that is correct. So that's three seventy as, as in its entirety. That's a revenue that's coming in, but we're, it's an expenditure that's going out. So three seventy in total.
So I, I, I'm going to suggest that, um, even though we've got some objections, that, uh, we, uh, certainly, Rusty and I are two people that always like more information and more time. Some of, some of the rest of us are faster on their feet, but, uh, we'd like to get that information. But we're trying to give a sense of going forward on this. Uh, would, would people have an objection if we pushed five, these five forward? Uh, of the people who objected, uh, we, we certainly, uh, have further discussions.
Yes, for your planning purposes, I'm fine with that.
Thank you. Okay, good. We're, so we're good with the, the capital projects. We will bring them in. Obviously, you get final approval before the end of the year. Okay. Okay, so what, next thing I want to do, you have some memos in front of you in terms of individual departments. You may not have time to absorb, but you have questions. I have staff here who can, if you have specifics about impacts to the individual departments, they can come up and brief you on those if you'd like. We could, they, I can definitely get the three departments that you have the memos in front of you right now. We could come up and talk to you about that i- if you would like, and just do a quick brief on it.
I haven't even looked at them. So, um, I'm going to suggest that, um, we, the whole council look at them and send our questions individually to the city manager, whoever it, that's appropriate. And, uh, I, but if you have any questions right now, feel free. Um, but I'm, I'm one who's going to wait because I haven't studied them. I'm sorry.
Correct. Yes.
Yeah, I haven't had that opportunity yet.
So.
The only comment that I would have about them is that, um, I, I find it difficult to, or not very palatable that, uh, something that's out of our control with our employee benefits is causing our staff to have to find decreases in things that are services to our community in order to cover that. I would just propose and, and ask the council to think about the potential of, um, those impacts being absorbed by the city. And then that gives us the ability to still provide services at a level that our community has come to enjoy and frankly have demanded. And so I'd just like that to be considered, not, not that we have to like tear it up tonight, but I'd just like that to be a consideration of folks while they're looking at things. Thank you.
I, I'd just like to say, I've, I've had time to read them and semi-absorb them, but one of the things I wanted to mention is there are several things in the police department's budget that I am not comfortable with having to be decreased. And it's even as simple as the community programs that will reduce the ability to do, excuse me, national night out, shop with the cop, trunk or treat, and some of the other events they do. You know, that's miniscule compared to some of the other budget items that they're talking about, which I think are critical and shouldn't be taken away from. But I know that shop with a cop and national night out are huge in this community. I have seen almost every police officer and even sheriffs from the sheriff departments participating in that. And it matters to this community, and it especially matters at a time right now with the division between, um, police officers in the community and having, uh, underserved children be able to participate with our police officers and see them in a positive light. And I will absolutely not support not funding those things. So.
I, I, I want to echo your concerns here. I, I know a lot of this budget was put together with an estimation on COVID. And if we can ever get past that, I think we've got some openings to, to do even more. But I, I believe that's why some of these things are there, because it just can't happen with the COVID. But correct me if I'm wrong. Um, this is what I heard before. And so, um, I, I, I likewise, I think these are tremendous community opportunities, but under COVID, it's a real problem. You know, by next summer, I'm hopeful that we're out of this dilemma.
And, and I'm, I'm, I'm going to echo those sentiments too. I think these community policing programs are very important and help, uh, help offset potential problems that can develop in the long run. And when you lose momentum on them, then, um, then that reaps negative dividends, um, moving forward. So I, I would agree with that too. But more importantly, I think most of, much of what we're looking at here doesn't so appreciably have a potential. Has, most of what we're looking at, in my estimation, is not placing an appreciable risk on the kinds of community services that people, um, should, should expect at a minimum. And I think we're doing a lot to try to address things outside of those foundational things that we do. So I, I feel comfortable the direction we're taking because we, we've got to get on the outside of that foundation as opposed to trying to break it. So.
I, I would suggest that, um, we, we take a hard look at all these things. I mean, I'm sure there's an argument to be made for all these things that the staff has really worked very diligently to try to reduce their budgets. Uh, this seems kind of an obvious one upfront, but, uh, once again, we could probably go through the whole list. I don't know that we want to do this, but this one seems like it's got some unanimity or consensus anyway, uh, to add the thousand bucks back. But I, I know, I realize you've done a huge amount of work, and, uh, we don't want to unwind that, but, um.
The, the other option, you know, you could, you could look at a couple of things. I mean, you have some, you have some own discretionary spending within the city council's budget. You have some capital that we talked, just talked about. So there's things that we can adjust to, to, um, to potentially fix that. But that's kind of, there's, there's just, yeah, I, you're exactly right. There was, we were pretty diligent in, in making sure that we went to the, the least impactful items on, in individual budgets.
I would say we bookmarked that one because it's kind of obvious that we have some initial reaction.
But don't get me wrong, it's not, it, it is going to reduce, it's going to hit services a little bit, and, but it's, it's what you have to do when you're in a flat budget.
Yeah, understand. Anything else, um, first of all? I haven't looked at any of the rest of it. Robert?
So, uh, I have a, a more foundational question for you, Darren.
Sure.
And that is, so there is a number of expenses that were not incurred in two thousand and twenty because of COVID changes, et cetera. So you're proposing a two thousand and twenty one budget. Where do you put the funds that are not spent from two thousand and twenty in your calculations? So we look at projections for revenues from two thousand and twenty one, but you've got revenues from two thousand and twenty which are unspent and not utilized. So can you explain that process?
Sure. It, it goes into your unassigned fund balance reserve. Your fund balance.
Your fund balance? And then that's where the designations come out. And then you, what's left over at the bottom is.
Were you?
You'll see. And if you'll look, if you look at your two thousand and twenty budget, the summary sheet, this one, and it breaks down the fund balances. And then at the end is your unassigned unrestricted fund balance reserve, which we've been referring to as UFBR.
And if you're saying, can we, can we compensate for these losses by dipping into the reserves? You can, but it, it's that, that's a council decision to do that. And, and I mean, I know we, yeah, people have differing opinions. You try to, try not to do that, right?
Sure, sure.
So, yeah.
Yeah, we've got, we've certainly got some latitude, and as Kelly and I talked last week about this, we're aspirational in these things. And we're, uh, we're, we're certainly looking forward October fifteenth when we see hard numbers, and we can make some pretty easy decisions probably.
So if.
Kelly was up.
I just want, oh, go ahead.
One of the, one of the things that, to, to think about is that, um, the net between revenues and expenditures close each year. So they zero out, and any balances are posted, uh, to that fund balance at the end of the year, which is on your balance sheet. to that fund balance at the end of the year, which is on your balance sheet, which carries year to year to year. And so that's how we increase our unreserved fund balance because our revenues have exceeded our expenditures over that period of time. So, but one of the things I wanted to mention in the slides that Darren talked about is that we have, we are limited in our expenditures by the sum of our revenues for the year as we project them to be. Plus, we can, as a council budget and appropriate, to spend some of those fund balance reserve items if we have something that is pressing, is an emergency, or we have a capital. You don't want to spend those one-time revenues on operations, but you can use them for investment in assets over the long term. So it, you can use those funds as you see fit or if is necessary. So it's, that's our legal limit on what we have the ability to spend. But everything closes into that fund balance. It's kind of acts like a savings account from the beginning of time, if you will.
So that, that's why you're confident that we can allocate a half a million dollars towards the, towards the debt cancellation?
Yeah. And I'll tell you that I think we're being conservative with our revenues in terms of revenue projections. So, and we don't, we won't get, I want to reiterate what you've seen in an email from me and from, from the county in that we won't get the valuation certification for our property tax until after October thirteenth. What we've done is we placed our, our actuals for twenty, twenty, twenty in there, or twenty nineteen in there as an, as an estimate for the next year. So there, there, it could be low. But there's a couple of properties that have transitioned from, what's that? Projections, okay. From twenty nineteen, there was a property that was commercial that became a nonprofit. The Sturman's Properties, you're probably aware, that has a significant impact on our property tax. So in the off years, you typically have growth in construction. We think that's going to be mitigated greatly from, from that impact. So we, we're, we have it as flat in terms of property tax increase for this, this coming year.
Which is what specific impact?
It just doesn't give us any additional revenues when I'm, what I'm.
No, no, but I mean, what's the current, what's the change?
It, there's no change. Is that what you're saying? From, from property tax?
Yeah.
That we, what we're predicting is no change. We would normally see a small increase in, in the off year. What we're going to say is that we, we don't, we're going to, it's probably going to stay flat because there's a loss of a major facility that will probably suck up that or absorb that increase.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, my answer to your question.
You're not, you're not able to give the specific amount?
We won't know until October third. I can tell you what.
It's about a hundred and thirty.
So, so what happens in terms, I just give you year-end projections right now. We projected in the adopted budget for 2020 was two million three hundred, or three, three, three thousand, two sixty-seven. And what we, what we see is year-end projections is one point nine million, five thousand. And so it's actually going down. So there's, there's some weird anomalies, I think, going on with the property taxes that have gone over the last couple of years. I think I won't get into the details on why I think that's occurred, but it's, we're, we're going to see a down year in, in that revenue.
We also have a Gallagher thing on the ballot.
That's correct.
Going to be a variable that we have no control over, except the vote.
Correct. Yeah. So that, that will.
Hopefully we'll have no impact based on my, my present state.
Okay. If it does go through, it would freeze the current residential assessment rate at seven point one-five and the commercial rate at twenty-nine percent. If it doesn't, it could drop the residential assessment rate to five point five eight percent, I believe, if it was what was projected by the joint budget committee. So there's, there's some things that could happen from that in itself. So in reality, we might just be safe just to keep it where, where it's at.
Yeah, it would be light on our feet, would be a good plan, I think. Thank you. Anything else on these?
Just one more question. Is it October thirty-first, we're expecting the preliminary assessed valuation?
Thirteen.
Thirteenth. Thank you.
He said he'll send them out on the thirteenth. So we probably get them fourteenth or fifteenth.
Thanks.
It's always a couple of days late. Okay. Any other questions related to departmental impacts?
So once again, I welcome the council to inspect these and send questions off by email to city manager and Emily to any specific questions once we study these. Thank you.
Well, I, just a comment. There's insufficient information here to even study it. Saying it's reduced, let's say, the first one on the, the chief of police memo, reduced nine hundred and seventy-five on school programs. But it doesn't say it's what it's reduced from. Is that point five percent reduction or is that a seventy percent reduction? I have no, there's no information here for us as council. Now, you might have it.
Correct.
I'm just looking at it saying, I can't even start spending time studying it with, with the limited information that has been presented. Is, are you saying this nine hundred and seventy-five is, is a, is this a nine hundred and seventy-five dollar reduction from
The previous year.
Last year's budget? And that's how we're supposed to read this memo?
Yeah, and we, and we'll get you, I mean, obviously, you're going to see that. You'll see the trend analysis in the budget when we hand it to you on October fifteenth. No, no decisions need to make, but you can actually look at your, your twenty twenty budget and reduce it by the amount.
There was no guidance in here how to interpret the data, but with that little bit of information, I can at least pull twenty twenty and I can do a little side by side. That, that's what I need.
Of, because it was, they are based on the, a flat budget. So expenditures had to be at least the same, if not less, but then we had to compensate for the increase in healthcare.
Right.
So that's where that's coming out of.
You see the one line in there in most of the departmental budgets is the healthcare increased by, which will be four point five percent. And then that's recaptured through the other line items with giving the departments the, the, the latitude to, to find the least impactful items within their budget to reduce as, to compensate for that four point five percent increase.
What you've given me has taught me how to interpret these memos.
Thank you.
I'll.
Yeah, these are all GL line items. So you can find them in your budget.
Okay. Any other questions related to departmental impacts? If not, I'm going to bring up Cindy to, to talk about the Woodland Aquatic Center cost recovery for, for you. Okay?
Please. Thank you.
I think he's running it back there. Rob, are you still going to run it back there? Okay. Good evening, Mayor Carr and council members. Thank you for the opportunity to come and speak with you tonight. With us, we also have Matt Hickey from E-Prep Solutions LLC and Chris, excuse me, Drapinski from Green Play LLC with us. Both are professionals in parks, recreation and open space consulting and cost recovery. The presentation tonight was sent to you back on September twenty-third. We've had a couple of council requests. So there's been just a little bit of change in the presentation. But you'll see that in the packet that I put at your seat earlier this evening. The goal from council that was presented was to enhance the financial performance by achieving an eighty percent recovery for the aquatic center. In an effort to achieve this goal, we believe it would be beneficial to capture some history of the aquatic center, determine if there's an industry standard, and also how is a recovery determined? Rob, you have my notes. One of the requests that we received earlier this week was what are, are the hours of operation at the facility? So when we opened the facility, October two thousand seventeen, and through Labor Day of twenty nineteen, we were operating at ninety and a half hours per week. Starting after Labor Day in two thousand nineteen through March seventeenth this year, we operated at eighty-five and a half hours per week. Since we reopened on June fifteenth, we've had several different schedules, but we are currently operate, operating with a total of fifty-three hours per week. So there's been reduction in hours to accommodate some of the restrictions that we have, and then also recognizing the usage times as well. Another question we received was how many guests are using the facility? So starting in two thousand eighteen, we had seventeen thousand, seven hundred and twenty daily visits. We had a total of a hundred and fifty-two passes sold, and the passes are your annual three-month and six-month passes. A total of two thousand fifty-five punch cards, and those are the ten punch and the twenty punch cards. And of the pass and punch cards that were held, an average of a hundred and nineteen visits were used each of those months. Also, we had seven hundred and eighty-four visitors that participated in our scheduled programs such as water fitness, learn to swim, and so on. In twenty nineteen, we saw a slight reduction where there was sixteen thousand twelve visits, daily visits at the facility, facility, selling a hundred and thirty-seven passes, one thousand five hundred and ninety punch cards, and of the passes and punch cards, ninety-one visits were used each month. And then we had a total of eight hundred and four visitors that participated in our scheduled pro, programs. This year, we have a total to date of three thousand five hundred and eighty-six daily visits, thirty-four passes sold, three hundred and ninety-nine punch cards sold with an average of fifty-one visits each month, and a hundred and seventy-two people are visitors participating in our scheduled programs. Moving one back. Thank you. Moving to the original discussion of cost recovery. We opened the facility to the community on October twenty-ninth, two thousand seventeen. In two thousand eighteen, we had a cost recovery of fifty-two percent, followed by a recovery in two thousand nineteen of forty-four percent. Our current average monthly recovery for the past four months is fifty-four percent. We expect our sales to be increasing in October because we'll be running some birthday specials since we'll be turning three years old. And we do expect to see our punch passes renewals coming up this month as well. Our current annual recovery for the whole entire year is twenty-six percent. I know that doesn't sound good at all. It doesn't sound nice to me either. However, if we were operating with no COVID restrictions, using the twenty twenty adopted budget, we would be recovering fifty-six percent. And you will see that we're projecting that for twenty twenty-one with the expectations of no restrictions with COVID. We wanted to look at agency trends. Next slide, please. We felt it necessary to know what was happening in the industry and where we fit in comparison. So a question was presented to the NRPA Open Forum and the CPRA Connected Community Pages. The question was, if you have a public indoor aquatic center, what is your cost recovery during normal operating times, non-pandemic? We received four responses. I was expecting many more. But I've learned through this process why I didn't receive very many responses. My first response I received was from Salida, Colorado. They recover forty-eight percent. The second one I received was from Port Townsend, Washington. They recovered thirty-six percent. And they figured if they just recovered direct causes that they would cost, they would be recovering about fifty percent. And then Matt and Chris, who are with us tonight, provided caution to the cost recovery calculations and comparison, comparisons. Matt encouraged us to know what went into the cost recovery calculation. And Chris wanted to caution us when trying to benchmark cost recovery, it would be like comparing raisins to watermelons. And I have them here tonight to help all of us understand how the cost recovery nuances are in the industry. So welcome, Chris and Matt.
Hello?
No?
This is Matt. Can you hear me? This is Matt. Can you hear me?
Chris, the sound. It's not a perfect system. Can you please talk?
Hello, this is Matt.
And this is Chris. I'm sorry, I lost my sound. I just got to back.
I don't know if that's, make a difference.
Cindy, can you hear me?
This is Chris. Can you hear me?
Chris, I can hear you. Can you hear me, Chris?
Yeah, I can.
Can you try talking now, please?
This is Chris. Hear me?
Did we unmute the TVs?
This is Matt.
People at home can hear them?
Well, we'll, we'll just all go home now.
So while we're, while we're on this, just as a side note, we are working very diligently to try to get this system re-engineered and redesigned so that we don't have these issues. Just a reminder to the folks listening and also here, we've, because of COVID, kind of pushed this together as best we could. And it has its issues. So we apologize.
Well, we had some expert input and we're hopeful that that solves some of this.
Maybe we can try to bring them back later or on another date.
Sure. That would be, that'd be fine.
They just have really great information to share with you. They have years of experience in the field and they can tell you what they have found over the years in trying to come up with cost recovery. That what, that was one of the reasons when you see in the PowerPoint that everything that Chris was having to say is like, there's so many variables when it comes to cost recovery. Let's see, if you, if you find someone that is doing better than a twenty percent, thirty percent, forty percent, how do you dive in, drill in and find out what are they actually recovering with? What they find in the industry is that many times these budgets are combined. And so it's very, you have other parts of facilities, other parts of their budget that are actually supporting the aquatic center portion. And so you don't really get a true number with that. But I will be happy to move along. And if we can get this figured out, that would be great. I did want to just discuss the two thousand thirteen feasibility study that was completed for an aquatic center. The study was paid for and directed by the Woodland Aquatic Project. The city staff was not involved in that project. And, and there are just a few inconsistencies between the feasibility study and actual operations. In this expense side, you'll see there's about a two hundred thousand dollar difference in the salaries and benefits. Most of that's going to be on your part-time side. And a lot of that has to do with our minimum wage requirements that we've experienced the past couple of years, starting at nine dollars and thirty cents until today where we're at twelve dollars an hour for our minimum. Our lifeguards, our front desk are all minimum wage employees. So that is impactful to the facility. Moving forward, as Darren had indicated earlier, minimum wage will be tied to consumer price index. But it will, the minimum wage won't go down if CPI goes down. So we will probably continue to see those increases. You'll also see a forty-four thousand difference in utilities. I think that's probably standard. We have pretty high utilities up here. And so that just was missed in the feasibility study. Also, there's a thirty-four thousand dollar difference in our contract services. And the contract services included the HVAC, IT, fire alarm systems. Hello? No?
Oh, this is Chris.
Hi, Chris.
Something's working.
Great. Well, I can hold right now and you guys can, we can go backwards and talk about recovery and the process of consistent procedures for recovery.
I, I would suggest you're almost done with this slide. Why don't you polish that off? And well, it'd only take a minute or two.
Certainly. I'll be happy to do that. Thank you. And then the one thing I did want to show you is that our insurance is actually cheaper than what was projected in there. So not everything is, is in the favor of the, of the city. But you also show that we do save some money in the insurance. In the revenue portion of it, you'll see $85,000 difference in daily use and passes, $26,000 difference in rentals. We do a bit better in the programming with about $11,000 better than what was projected in the feasibility study. And then also a $2,000 difference in their pro shopper vending. And if you recall from the 2020 budget, we were going to start our concession sales in 2020. And I think we could have made that up as well. I think these, excuse me, these revenues, I think there could be improvements in the sales of passes and daily use as well with rentals. It was just a matter of determining what those programs look like in moving forward. Do you want me to move on to the rest of the presentation or?
While we have their guests, maybe we ought to hit those. I just wanted to finish that one slide if it's.
Great. Thank you. Chris and Matt?
Okay, Cindy, yeah, this is Christopher Pasky. I'm with Green Play. We're a parks and recreation management consulting firm with our headquarters offices in Louisville, Colorado. I've been in the field my entire career, the past 20 years as a consultant. And we do feasibility studies and help with operations and that of all sorts of parks and recreation facilities. So when I saw Cindy's message about looking for comparisons for cost recovery, that's a particular body of work that we have done, many studies of that regard. And my caution was that because people count things differently, every city sets up their budget just a little bit differently. And there are costs that some agencies, when you look at a particular facility budget, are not included in it, wherein others it would be included. And then looking at the type of facility that you have, it really makes a difference. An aquatics facility is not, excuse me, is not a, they're not all the same. From rectangular pools, deep diving wells, leisure elements, and how those are all put together makes such a difference in how you operate those pools and what it costs you and what your revenue potential can be. So when we, whenever I see a question that asks for a comparison of cost recovery, I always put that caution out there. With the studies that we have done in looking at indoor standalone aquatic facilities, there aren't a tremendous amount throughout the country that are standalone. But we would say somewhere between 40% and 60%, again, based on what you're counting, is within reason of 50% maybe what we see more often. We think that the benchmark figures, their cost recovery figures that you have as your own benchmarking are going to be the most reliable for you. What was your starting point? I know Cindy showed a slide where it was in 2018, 19 and 20. Benchmarking against yourself is much more reliable because you know you're counting the same things each time. So that's, I guess, a little bit of a overview of what we see in cost recovery across the country.
And hi, this is Matt Hickey with ePrep Solutions. I do work specific to cost recovery within Parks and Recreation Agencies across the United States. And I reached out to Cindy when I saw her post and, you know, saw my comment up there about, you know, make sure that when you do a comparison, you need to know exactly what they're counting. In my experience where I've seen, you know, as Chris said, there's not too many standalone aquatic facilities out there. In my research, I did find one in Dallas, Oregon, and their cost recovery was 54%. I did research about, I went through 50 different organizations that I found. And of those 50, 10 were pool standalones only. But, you know, I mentioned this to Cindy in the research that I was doing with their financials. I wasn't able to pull out the specific cost recovery just for the pool. But again, in my experience, I mean, I've seen some pools that have other operations where the pool is only bringing in about 8% cost recovery. And that's including programs and rentals within the pool. And that pool's in a bigger facility with gyms and weight rooms and that kind of thing. But to Chris's point, you know, for a standalone to be around 40 to 60% is, is actually around 60% would be, in my opinion, very good. And so just again, the history of where, where I come at this from is that any pool facility, be it a city, school, YMCA, unless you're having other outside, you know, gyms and weight rooms and climbing walls and that kind of thing, it's hard for the pool itself to be above about 60%. And again, that's kind of the max that I've seen in the industry.
Did council have any questions for Chris or Matt at this point? Or I just have a couple more pages in my presentation?
I just want to say thank you for the information. It's nice to hear from others that have a little more experience at this than we do.
Anybody else? Oh, thank you for bringing in some experts.
They came to me. I didn't search for them. They saw my question and they said, oh, Cindy, we need to talk about this a little bit more. It's not just flat across the board. As Chris's statement is, it's like comparing raisins and watermelons. And when you start having these conversations and researching, it's really hard to find apples to apples or even apples to oranges. And so I really appreciate both of them reaching out to me and allowing me to share their expertise with you.
As you know, I've been asking for this information for four years. And so I'm glad that we're finally getting some input from out there in the community.
Thank you both. Moving on with my presentation, I just wanted to also include was in 2017, prior to opening the facility, we asked the YMCA to submit us a proposal to operate the facility. The proposal that we received from them stated that they would generate about $169,000 in revenue, which they would keep, incur about $644,000 in expenses. Those expenses did not include any startup costs for a new facility, any utilities or any ongoing maintenance items. Those would have been the cities to take care of. And they would ask the city to pay them $475,000 to operate this facility. We felt that we could do better than that. So, and I think that we are. We are currently retaining our revenues. We do incur all of the expenses. And the general fund supports the aquatic center with approximately $330,000 a year. So it's better than what we would have had if we would have brought the YMCA in to operate the aquatic center. The presentation tonight, what I was really trying to do is provide information so we could all work together to make educated decisions. I'd like, we all want to see the aquatic center improve in its fiscal recovery. With the information that's been provided and what we've learned through the process, we would respectfully request a recovery goal range of 50 to 60% with a 1% to 2% increase each year. And then once we've achieved this, let's see what we can take it to after that. We currently do not have solid data to reference from our facility. Our first year was excitement. Our second year was standard operations and our third year was a pandemic. There are learning opportunities that we are taking that have occurred during the COVID. And it will change our future operations of that facility. And there is always room for adjustments such as increasing our marketing, reviewing and adjusting our operational hours, reviewing and adjusting our staff coverage, expanding our programming, integrating corporate rates, after all, our rentals, which we just got to start a little bit last year before the pandemic started, expand our rental opportunities, start our concessions as we had planned to do. And as Councilman Neil provided, any suggestions will and can be considered. So I would just like to thank you again for the opportunity to come and talk with you. And I would open this up for any questions if you have any.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate that. I'll start it out. A couple of months ago, you came forward and you said you were really approaching a 70% maybe as a snapshot in time. And I think that's where the 80% aspirational number came from. And like, like what some of us discussed on council, a lot of this is aspirational anyway. But any clues on why that blip in the statistics curve happened? And what's happened to change it back?
So in June, we recovered 61%. In July, we recovered 77%. And August was 48 and September is not very good. It's 29. September, we relate that to school starting and people getting ready to go into school. We changed our hours. I really do believe to see October back up into the, into the 70s again with the birthday specials, renewal of our passes, and just opening up the facility a little bit more for some more programming. We'll be bringing in after-hours rentals for anyone that's looking for holiday parties or holiday get-togethers. And then we're also going to be opening up our birthday parties for people to come in and do those. In August, I don't have an answer for you other than we had to finally order some chemicals. And so every month is going to be a little bit different as we have to order chemicals. Our utilities have been pretty status quo since we've opened back up. So I do see the average at the end of the year being about 54%.
Yeah, realize everything's cost averaged over an annual basis or two or three years, frankly. In this pandemic situation, nothing's certain. Appreciate you, council. Any further questions for?
I just don't want to scare council with those numbers. But if you looked at the revenue expenditures were much smaller in terms of the, in terms of the impact, total impact of the budget, we're still monitoring that, right? So we saw like one-third or one-fourth of what we normally would have spent in that, at that time. So just please keep that in mind.
Yeah, it'll be proportional. Understand.
I do have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
What is your confidence level that your projected revenue is even remotely close? And how did you come to that? I mean, given COVID and the numbers you see there, the uncertainty of the future around COVID, and then I see a hard number that shows a sizable increase from 2019. How did you conclude that that would be the revenue?
Are you looking at the recovery slide?
Our recovery history.
Okay, thank you. What we did for 2021 is we submitted a flat budget from 2020. That's the exact same budget as we had for 2020 with a recovery of 56%. We truly believe if we would have been operating at full capacity without any restrictions of COVID, we would have reached that 56% this year. So since we are not able to do that this year, we, our goal is for next year for that 56% in planning for no COVID restrictions.
But is that, is that reality? We know there's still going to be COVID left over at the beginning of the year. It's not going to go, even with vaccine, it's not going to go away. So I, it's like building a budget on a house of cards, you know? The foundation is flimsy. The election will be over. Good, good. I, I'm just trying to get comfortable with the numbers and I, it doesn't pass the logic test that you would say it's going to be the same as 2020.
Projected.
Projected 2020.
Well, it was approved 2020, projected for 21, the exact same budget for 21.
Correct.
So the anticipation is to be operating 100% when we're working in our budgets. So we're working 100% at the same as 2020 when we're submitting our flat budgets for 2021.
And you can hope for the best, expect the worst and settle for in-between. I'm trying to, this is kind of the in-between, but I don't see any reality where it's factoring in the, expect the worst. Engineering factor, you take, you know, you average out optimistic, pessimistic, two times realistic. And then you average that out. That's the engineering principle. I don't see that in this number if you just do a flat line from 2020 because it doesn't factor in COVID. And we know it's still going to be here in January, February at least. So are those numbers, should we be reflecting something less than the revenue stream there realistically? So expectation management.
Sorry, excuse me. It does match the 2020 adopted budget.
I understand that.
Which is about 30,000 less than the 2019 adopted budget. So they did adjust for, you know, what was seen in actuals.
Russ, can I help?
Yeah, I can chat up.
Please help me.
I would suggest that it is, we, our, our knowledge of what COVID effect is going to be next year is probably as sure as our knowledge of it not being an effect. So we're, we're looking at best case scenario. And we did that for the beginning of this year. And so when we, when we saw, as we started to experience the year, that it wasn't going to happen, we adjusted. We pulled back, right?
So this is less than.
Well, no, I would, our projections for year end 2020 are much less than what our budget was. And that's because we adjusted our spending during the year when we had changes in our, the existence of our reality, right? So if, if next year, we start to experience next year and it doesn't behave in a normal fashion as the budget is set, then we would again pull back and adjust our habits and our spending habits. Although the budget is there to spend that much, as a management team, they would pull back, as would the council ask for us and anticipate that we would pull back and not spend if COVID doesn't behave and go away after the election.
Yeah. So that's what I want to hit on is exactly what, what Councilmember Kay said is that this is the, we're asking for what we normally spend, but we, like you can see in the slide right here, we can adjust it. So there's not a, I don't think there is a risk of overspending. We would, we would adjust both those expenditures based on, because we have a very good optimization staff model to, to adjust for our, for our labor expenditures. And so we can, we can adjust in, within the year if we see problems with COVID, right? But this, this is if, what would happen if COVID weren't here? And if we're able to continue to operate at a normal level? I get where you're, you're saying we should.
COVID will be.
If we played, it will, it will be. But in the best case scenario, you want to, you want to project for those revenues and those expenditures. We can adjust internally like we did this year to, to ensure we're not overspending or basically overspending, right? So we would adjust, and you could see we would adjust that model to account for that. And it won't exceed what's budgeted. That's, that's.
The city attorney is walking away on a legal issue apparently.
I was just, maybe put a different way to make it a little bit easier. When council sets the budget, you set the expenditures that we are allowed to do.
Yes, the cap.
And so the revenues are what we hope to get and we project those out. But if COVID is still in effect and if we're still having restrictions, as we've seen this year, those expenses drop. And so to your concern, we're optimistically looking at next year as being open. But in reality, the worst case scenario, I suppose, depending on how you look at it, the worst case scenario is we don't spend anywhere near what you've allocated for, to be spent. But if we project that we're only going to, if we're going to project that we have COVID and we don't, then we have to come back to council and get permission to make those expenditures next year as opposed to lower the expenses in the interim.
Thank you, Jason. That's exactly what I was trying to say.
Councilmember Zuluaga. Robert, how many kids do you have that makes it so simple for you to express yourself like this?
I have four children myself and I come from a family of six siblings. And I'm in the middle. So I've been on the, I've been, yeah, it's my life.
So I sent out a few questions in response. I think you might have got them. It was Trish Center who was actually initiated the questions. But I'm also wanting to say, well, how can you break these numbers down into something that's real? And then adjust scheduling for that. So here's some questions that I posed and I'd like all the council to be aware of and listening public. Number one is, can we graph each hour the pool is open Monday? For example, eight, six Tuesday, eight to six, graph that for the month and the year. So all through COVID, what's that look like? The exact numbers of guests in each time slot. Because if we're open, for example, from eight to eight to eight, eight to six, whatever it is, and we don't have anybody or we have one person at eight, three at nine, ten at, at et cetera. We can look at the staffing graph and squeeze the hours that they're open. Squeeze the, the guests into a set of hours that maximizes the use of the pool, given restrictions or whatever else. So when we're looking at doing this budget, I have two questions, or two sides to look at. One is what's our operational cost for the facility versus our staff cost for this facility? And what does that look like? If we graph that to find optimization with what we've got, with the restrictions we've got, whether COVID's here or not here. Those are some, for us, it's going to be helpful to know. We have flat out operational costs for chemicals, electricity, gas, all those sorts of things. And that's, that's a fixed cost. What's not a fixed cost is the amount of staff we use over the course of time. And so if we are overstaffing it compared to the use of the pool, that is an area where we can certainly do cost recovery and, and operate the pool smart. At least that's the way my thinking is on it. And you can't know that without having it graphed to see what's the track record of what we're doing now. What's the past track record of what we've done? Then my mind goes to the next thing. It's like, okay. What percentage of our community, what's the actual numbers of people in our community who are using the pool? Now, we have a lot of advocates. I get that. But let's have a look at what do we, how many are actually using this? So what's the number of guests that we're having that come one time? How many guests come every day or the same guest who comes every day or comes once a week? So that we can graph what's actual community usage of it. Then how many are from out, out of, out of our city? How many people are we getting through the tourist bureau or getting through the traction that we have from saying that Woodland Park has an aquatic center? So if we can get some sense of where our dollars are being spent, where they're actually coming from and graphing that on a weekly and a monthly basis so that we've got something to, to establish a plumb line to say, okay, if we're looking at cost recovery, where are we having blowouts and where can we, where can we trim? Let's see, some of the other ones I had was the number of staff working each hour time slot, the cost of operation by month. So what's the cost of operation? And you've gone a little bit touched on this as, as you had sixty-sevens, sixty-one, seventy, seventy-seven, forty-eight and twenty-nine. That's a scary graph. That's a scary graph.
It is. I agree.
So quantifying, so my whole goal was quantify all of the components of this, put them on a chart, look at where they are. And then we can take some real scientific, mathematical and actual steps to say, okay, this is what we have to do. Then we can drive advertising towards that, drive promotions towards that in a way that we're still optimizing the, the use of the pool against given costs. Cause I get the fact that you've got certain given costs that won't go away. But our staff costs are high and they are costs that we can adjust and then maximize the usage. Lastly, that's all. That, that, that kind of puts it in a framework that I think will help us take it from being amorphous and well, also subjective into something that we can really work together with. Cause I know you guys are busting your, 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 you're busting yourselves to make this all work and I appreciate that. But what we can do together to make this happen, I certainly want to see it a success because it scares me, the albatross it's quickly becoming. So let's see what we can do to change that.
Thank you for reviewing the email that, and I did receive that time constraints just wouldn't allow me to get all of that information out tonight. So I was able to provide a bit of that. I think one of the things that can be fairly difficult for us to do to, for ease of our customers is our daily use. We just check them and we collect their money and let them go and we don't set up accounts for them. We don't get any information on them. We can look at our new system and see, hey, what can we do with our new system that can track that for us? But we may not have, I would, it would be hard pressed to find out if I can get that historical data on that for the way we had operated before. Our passes, our punch cards, we gather data on all of those people and they're part of our databases. As far as hourly visits, our past software didn't do that. And we started doing it manually at the facility last year in 2019. So we can look at those numbers as well. And staffing, I'm going to tell you, that's one of the biggest learning curves that we've had with the COVID pandemic and the restrictions that we've been having to follow. And I think that that's where one of the things that you'll see our adjustments are currently. We have eight part-time employees. Not all of them work twenty hours a week. It's just eight part-time employees to cover lifeguarding for us. Right now, we currently have thirty-six employees that are furloughed. So we are operating on much less staff currently. And I think we will see staffing on the deck a little bit different than what we've seen in the past.
I, I swim over there. So I see the staffing optimization, let's call it.
Mr. Mayor, I just, I just want to make one thing clear that, and I don't, this is not meant to be any attack or anything like that. I just want the council to remember that individual council members are not to task staff. And if the council agrees that that information is valuable to the council, then that would be something that would be appropriate. So I would, I trust that this, that the staff at the aquatic center and the, the staff at the parking racks department hear our concern and hear what our goals are and what we're trying to do. And they understand how important it is that we reduce that recovery and that subsidy as much as possible. And, and I thank them for their hard work and paying attention to those details in their management of that facility. That's all. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, I, I have also asked for some detail and, and the, the, my, my goal was to see if we have some opportunities as council that we're unaware of to, to assist. And I've asked for clientele information and things like that. This new software is, I must have fallen asleep during the presentation of that. But the new software sounds like it will be helpful towards some of these goals. I would, I would say as council, we're always looking for opportunities to assist. And if, if some of these statistics help a majority of us towards that goal, I would, I would welcome those things. And I think, I think you're, you've said that some of that's available. Like I said, I've been asking for some of this stuff for four years. So whenever you get to it, let's be welcome. But, but I do recognize that it is a sense of the council. My goal would be to find ways that we can assist in your operations from a, from a policy standpoint.
Yeah, I just want to clarify something here related to Colorado law. It is certainly not the responsibility nor the prerogative of council to task staff. But it is also the task of the staff to provide as much transparency as possible. So I want to clarify that. And I believe that the spirit of the questions asked in this particular session and most importantly, related to a budget session. We have a lot of important decisions to make and having all the information available helps us do that. And I, there, there's plenty in Colorado law that makes it clear that we need that. Now, I say that to clarify the point that was made. But I do not say that in any way to besmirch the staff itself, which I think generally has a desire for transparency. I just want to clarify. I know me as a council member, I'm always going to throw out a task that provides transparency and understanding as opposed to something that just, again, with all due respect to staff, our job up here is to make sure that we have the information available to pass the budget. And then the city manager tasks staff, which with management and responsibility items as opposed to, well, in, in addition to his or her requirement to make sure that council has all the information since we are the authorizing body for financial matters. So want to make that very clear.
Thank you. Any other discussion or questions for Cindy?
I do want to add one thing I think that may be missed in this and that there are safety requirements that are required. Sometimes staff optimization or linear regression in terms of staff optimization modeling doesn't necessarily work. Because there's, there's, there's legal requirements and insurance requirements for us to have a certain number of lifeguards on duty for so many numbers of people that are within the facility. So Cindy has to navigate all of that in order to, to try to bring the best service we possibly can right now to, to the pool. But I get what you're saying. I think, I will tell you, I think Cindy has an incredible amount of data that you may, you may not be aware of that she keeps. She, she comes with a finance background and I've, we've sat down and then looked at it and, and talked about her staff optimization model. And she, she thinks about this every single day. And so it weighs, it weighs on her because you know, this is a thing, this is a pretty hot topic in the community. And so I appreciate what Cindy does. It's not an easy job. And we all know that we all want to get better. And so I just want to thank Cindy for what she did tonight and what she presented the city council. So thank you.
Thank you. I think we're done.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Cindy. Appreciate it.
Now I have our future utilities director, Kip Wiley, he's going to present on another topic for you. There we go. All right.
All right. One of the items for consideration was no increase in water usage rates and tap fees. So I broke down basically the two differences between the rates and the fees. This is a little premature because these rates and fees don't take effect until April first next year. And I also bring to, to council the water tap management plan reconciliation at that time to look at the tap fees. So just the one slide, really quick. I'm actually going to start at the bottom with tap fees since I just addressed that with the water tap management plan. Based on review of that management plan, that takes into account all revenues, all expenditures, and then all capital improvements that need to be done or need to or preserve our water future, if you will. So that spreadsheet basically determines what the adjustment should be for that year. So you'll see that coming forward and that covers the capital fees just covered capital improvements. Going towards the rate side of things. So every April first, we adjust utility rates, water and wastewater based on the consumer price index. In 2017, we changed the annual adjustment to a hundred percent of the consumer price index. It was seventy-five percent of the consumer price index. The last rate adjustment we had done was in 2010. Okay, so twenty or ten years ago. I think what we've shown over the years is if we stay with inflation, we can moderate any large adjustments or reductions. Our costs are our costs and the big, the wide spot in the road is water that's sold. If it's a wet year, we're not selling water. We're not bringing in any revenue to cover those operational expenses. In a dry year, we sell lots of water. It's that double-edged sword. When you have it, no one wants it. And when you don't have it, everybody wants it. So also what I wanted to point out, what's important with rates, with the usage rates and fees are O and M costs are covered by our rates. Okay. And our fees, our tap fees or our capital replacement fees cover those capital improvement costs. So I haven't done the exact math to show, to, to know exactly where the balance is between rates and O and M. Yet I will tell you, I budget very conservatively in revenues every year. So the budget that I have submitted for revenues is flat. There's not an increase in it. Because you really don't know what the weather's going to bring from year to year. I always say we're one year away from our next drought. This year wasn't the best snowpack. It was slightly, I would say average, slightly below average. However, if next year is dry, it's a totally different discussion. It's the best I can do to define kind of where we're at and what, what we'd want to look at. On the wastewater side of things, we did increase rates in 2017, but that was to pay for the wastewater treatment plan expansion. And that was a requirement to get that funding. I will say, if we have extra money at the end of the year, it goes into our fund balance. Therefore I can save money for capital projects and therefore take out less debt for those projects. So that's ultimately my goal, but it is a, it's a double-edged sword. You don't want too much fund balance, but you want enough to cover those expenses when you need them. And it's long-term planning with that, so.
Can you wag the numbers for us eventually, maybe by October fifteenth on the impact of the freezing everything?
So what I've submitted to finance is the basically a zero, I, I never plan for an increase in rates. I always say same rates. Consumer price index comes out, we adjust in April. And that's only, you know, for the, the remainder of the year. It's not the whole year for revenues. It's not like we go back and charge people for the price index. So what I've submitted to finance is no increase. I never plan for an increase. I'm always conservative in that realm.
So in April, there might be a supplemental or something. That's what you're saying?
It's a normal rate process that it comes in front of you in April.
So, so in April, I typically give council the report of what the rates would adjust because if the consumer price index is negative, our rates go down. It's only happened once. But if it's positive, I think the eleven-year average is two-point-two percent is what I had calculated in March of this year. So, and we've been tracking that for quite some time. And I think what's interesting is when we adjusted the, the rates to be a hundred percent of the consumer price index, we've seen a kind of a nice level out to where we're not falling behind anymore. So where we'd have to do a larger rate increase in the future.
Counsel, any questions for Kip?
I just want to touch on a couple, just to emphasize some of the things that you, that you cover in the slide. And one of the things that isn't talked about is, you know, some, there's a mix between O and M and, and capital that Kip's going to have to, to deal with. And that's where these rates and fees go. One of the things you can find in Colorado is over time, the cost construction index has been about three-point-three percent per year over the last decade. So even if he's doing a two percent, you, you stop one year, you're going to be behind in terms of the construction because he's going to, you're going to have to make it up. If you stop, you're not going to do two, twenty-two percent this year. There's going to be a point where you have to do four-point-four percent at some point in the future to cap. Otherwise you're going to have to debt fund or debt fund the, the, the capital. So it's, if you, if you freeze this, you have to think about, are we, it's a temporary impact. But long-term, it's a choice for you whether you cash fund something or you're going to debt fund, debt fund the, debt finance the reservoir. So I just keep that in mind. That's, those are the, those are kind of the major decisions that you have to make.
Back in, and this is how recent it was, back in 2012, the water fund was depleted to the point where we needed a loan from the wastewater fund to hold. The water fund was depleted to the point where we needed a loan from the wastewater fund to hold it at a certain level. We were able to pay off debt, pay that loan back. Obviously, one fund loaned it at a very low interest rate to the other. But just eight years ago, it was in that case. I could tell you now, the water fund is very healthy. Don't quote me. I think it's around 5 million, but I'm anticipating a very large expense and we've paid off a lot of debt since then.
Yeah, your fund balance is 5 million. That's correct. For the water.
I don't watch pennies at all.
So.
I'd like to, I, I, I would just like to say that I think freezing this is a little premature. Because we vote on all of these issues. So you have a choice to either vote yes or no. So for everyone to just flat out say, yeah, let's freeze this. I think it's premature and a little irrational. And the irony is I never vote to raise the funds. But, but that's where our power lies is in our vote. And having the information come forward, knowing where the funds stand, knowing where we are seasonally with our droughts. Or if we're in a non-drought season, which has been rare now. But that's how I make my decisions is I know where his funds at. I know what he needs or doesn't need. I know whether we've had rain or snowpack. When we want to get water from twin lakes, you know, I support that kind of thing. But, and if I knew the funds needed to be raised for a very particular reason, then I would be willing to consider them. I think I'm probably one of the only council members up here though, that is paid for tap fees. So I know how painful they are. So I don't vote to increase them typically. But I also don't vote to increase them for the benefit of builders and other construction as well, not just my personal self. But that's something that we just voted on last April and you all voted to increase the tap fee except for me. So, which I know Kip's grateful for and Kip and I have talked about this kind of stuff. But I prefer to keep the power to vote rather than agree to freeze this type of fund. I think that water is crucial. It is a critical element to our city. And I don't think that it's something that we should be considering to freeze. So thanks. I'm getting tired. So I'm losing ends of my words already.
Any other comments from council or discussion?
So I don't know if now's the time to talk about it or not, but the cash reserve that you have, are you looking to cash fund the reservoir, the building of the reservoir? Is that your goal?
As much as possible. Still maintaining a healthy fund balance for emergencies, for additional CDPHE requirements that come down the pipe. Things are changing in the water industry daily. There's new requirements. So keeping a healthy balance between a down payment and funds available for, for things that are coming. So we will have to finance some, majority of the reservoir, just not all of it.
Well, we'll have a later discussion about where that's all. I just wanted to know if that was a goal that you had or whether.
As much as possible.
And these fees contribute to that. So, yeah.
I just want to share that in, particularly in an enterprise fund. Those investments in capital serve the public for many years into the future. They provide a life for that asset for 30, 40 years, 50 years into the future. And will serve residents and the public over that timeframe. And so the logic and the rationale in the finance world for debt funding, those capital types of large capital improvements. Is that those that benefit into the future from that investment pay for it over that time. Instead of those that came before the asset was put in place, being the ones that are carrying the brunt of that expense. Because the benefit goes to those in the future. So that's just a basis, a rationale for, for using debt funding for particular large dollar capital improvements. Just to share.
And if I can, I want to touch, I want to, want to help out with, if there's, there's training opportunities in water and, and that I think council could benefit from. And if you're interested in doing that. Cause what we'll have to do is justify why we need a reservoir at some point in the future with council. And it'll be incredibly important, important for you to understand why we need storage. And it's a lot about what Kip's talking about in terms of these droughts, right? And having enough water here to, to support our community and getting us off of our external resources as well. Buying more water rights so that the, the city is more self-sustaining in the future. So a lot of that is, there's some great, great training that we can provide to the city council. That can help start building your understanding of, of these issues before that big major reservoir issue comes to you.
And one thing I'd just like to add just is with our water planning, we have a max population based on water. When we meet that, there's no more selling taps. All that burden then becomes our existing customers. Right? So you have to take that into account and you can't charge the developers that complete burden either. So there's a fine balance between existing customers and new development and who's paying for what. But there will come a point in time where all the infrastructure, all the physical water, all the augmentation water will have to be paid for by our existing, by our existing customers with no additional help from development. So we can only go so far.
Thank you. I know that the planning director is creating a nice training program for Planning 101. It sounds like this should be Water 101 trainings for, these are things Suzanne and I've been talking about for a couple of years. And I think these opportunities are great. I'm looking forward to all these things. I see no other comments. So I appreciate your presentation. We'll look forward to your numbers on the budget and take a little harder look at them then. I appreciate you, your presentation.
Thanks.
We've got two more items, one for Darren, one for me. And so we're coming up on our two hour break and hopefully we'll be done.
Okay. Next to, yeah, we have the other item and that's Verk and Main Street. I'm going to bring Robin up. You have, I think it's Robin, right? Yeah. No, it's not me, please. No. You have this, you have this sheet in front of you. So I'm going to just kind of give you some, obviously this was a discussion last meeting. There's been some deliberations and discussions about the Verk. Staff reviewed what was given to us. And this is not a recommendation, but this is if, if we were to prioritize the top three vehicles that we felt could be removed or relinquished from our inventory, these would be the three that we would. And so I have, I have Robin here to talk about some of those staff impacts. And the inefficiencies that could occur as a result, but also just that you have, these are the three that we have on tap for tonight. For that discussion from a staff recommendation perspective. Anything you want to? Sorry.
So the first one we have is the planning director's vehicle. Sally would retain her vehicle through her tenure here with the city. And then with her retirement, we wouldn't have a vehicle directly assigned to the planning department. This impacts planning because they do attend meetings and trainings and conferences, both locally and regionally and sometimes statewide. So not having a dedicated vehicle to that department would, could potentially cause some inefficiencies. The second vehicle is the Jeep Liberty, which is the public works director's vehicle. That vehicle is similar to the planning director's vehicle and that is used to attend conferences and trainings and meetings. It's also used to respond to emergencies citywide and assist the utilities director. If needed for water break WB's, sorry. And sewer backups if that, if those sort of things happen. Also used in the winter time to assess snow conditions. So the utilities director and public works director could potentially team up using a vehicle. But that could cause problems if we needed to go in different directions. The third and last vehicle is a vehicle that Fleet Services currently has. What would happen with that one is it would be transferred to Parks Buildings and Grounds Department. And one of the Parks Buildings and Grounds vehicles would be relinquished. That would put Fleet down by one vehicle. They currently have three. That would bring them down to two. Mainly what they use the vehicle for is transporting the driving to one location and dropping it off and picking up a vehicle that needs to be repaired. That vehicle doesn't have any tools or fuel tanks in it. So they have less concern about anything being vandalized or stolen from it.
That's just, the yellow is just the comments you made to him.
Also, any questions?
I have a question. So if they got rid of the planning director's car and then we had a planning director. And they have to go to these trainings and drive around, then do we need to do gas reimbursement?
So we actually have a floater vehicle for city hall. So they would be able to use that vehicle if it wasn't in use. And if not, then I think that we are required to do reimbursement at the federal rate, which is.
Yeah, we have a standard mileage policy.
Correct.
So what's the federal rate for gas reimbursement?
54 cents now?
54 and a half.
It dropped two cents, I think this year, right?
Per mile.
Okay. Cause that's a pretty significant amount of money with the miles that Sally's driven. So I was like, what?
That's why, yeah, Hillary, that's why we, when I worked with David Butterey on some ideas and asked Darren to go back with his staff and look at it. We knew there had to be a float vehicle for any of these reductions.
Right. Yeah. Cause otherwise the gas reimbursement.
Gas would eat us alive.
Right.
Yeah, the V U R C had many float vehicles available.
But what happens when the floating vehicle is taken by someone else? How do we, how do you get somewhere where they need to be?
I mean, it does make it a little more difficult for sure. And that's where it comes in, maybe taking your personal vehicle and getting mileage reimbursement. If you have to be somewhere that's for the same thing. We often carpool to these conferences as well on that same vehicle. So we look for that. We do have other vehicles, but those are not necessarily passenger vehicles. We, we can lean on others to, to try to borrow a vehicle if we need to. If we don't feel like there's going to be an emergency that require the other one. So there are, there's some flexibility within city hall.
So I mean, Sally wouldn't take a plow truck to Denver?
No, I don't think.
Unless she wanted to.
That would be entertaining.
And, and I don't want to interject it. It may not be relevant tons, but the federal rate we've been told from our audience is at 57.5. It was 58.
What I thought it was.
But it fluctuates from year to year.
Yeah, that's like $20,000 in gas reimbursement for like.
Our, our expense report is, needs to be updated.
I'm unfinished. So, thank you.
Anybody else? Robert?
So when we were looking at the Verk report, there was also the ongoing savings. So it was a one-time sale of these vehicles, but what does that impact look like in terms of the cost savings to the motor pool generally? What are we, do we, did you come up with a number on that? Is that?
Each, each vehicle is a little different. Obviously it depends on the age of it and how much the services are. But services play a part in, we have to change the world regardless. There's a lot of things that we do. So each vehicle has a little bit of a different factor in it. So.
Well, the numbers.
Insurance, you save about $250 on average per vehicle would be saved. Then you get the cost recovery selling them. That revenue can go back in. I, I don't think you really get an $850 per vehicle space saving. I know that was in the Verk, but when you look at it operationally, I don't think that's really a true savings. The $850 per car.
Well, the study had for 15 vehicles, like 100 and what was 115,000 additional. I mean, it was like 45,000 or something recovery for the sale plus additional ongoing savings to the city of about 115,000. So when you scale it down to these three, do you have some sort of number of what those savings look like added to the sale of it?
I think they're specified on this handout.
I, I didn't see it.
You, you have the blue book value of a sellback, but the spreadsheet would have more detail for those three vehicles.
And I can talk to Mark and we can come up with some annual maintenance costs and insurance costs.
These look to me like long range intentions. Is that true?
These vehicles?
Yeah.
I mean, they're next year, 2021, right? Yeah. So, yes.
All right. Anything else? Thank you. Appreciate it.
I'll just comment if you don't mind, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Sorry, I missed your, your look. I just think that these are one time, these are one time savings. I think the long-term impact of the, in operations and reimbursing gas and mileage over time. I think it's a negligible thing based on experience that I won't agree with. And I'm not interested in getting into operations at all. Thank you.
Thank you. I, thank you very much.
Thanks, Robin.
The last item, I took, we, we put out a survey poll of council on the Main Street funding. We came up with an average of $9,200 in funding spread across. We had no consensus on any single number. So we decided to do an average. Came up a 9,200, actually 91666666, which I rounded up to $9,200. I'm aware that there are citizens that are going to be contributing their own private money to Main Street also. I've been in contact with some of them. And so there, there will be private funding per Mr. Paff's suggestion in addition to that. But the, the average that was put out there was $9,200 for Main Street funding. Any further discussion by council? Remember, we're trying to give guidance to, to the city staff.
My preference is to keep the same funding at 15,000 that's in the budget from 2020. I see benefit from Main Street, especially all of the, the discussions councils had over since April. About their, some of the council's desire to help businesses. And I know that the circumstances we're in right now has had some significant impact on a lot of our businesses. We heard from a lot of them last week when, when they spoke to us. And I hear that. And I, I think it's a missed opportunity for us to engage and help our businesses. As has been talked about a lot. I don't think this is the right time to do this. I think if they have, they've found some creative ways. They, they have built a reserve. And I think that the intention of that reserve is not for operations, but for investment into the community and programs and longer range things. So I'd, I'd like to see them have that to invest and to try and grow and become even more effective in what they do for our community and our businesses. So I'm listening to what people took the time to come and tell us. And, and I, I just would like to see the funding stay at 15 for next year. Thank you for the opportunity, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Anybody else? Rusty?
Yeah, I, I mean, I did meet with, with Lori and Kara to go through their numbers. And because I was the one that said I was, would like to see more information before I could make a decision. And I just want everybody to know that I did vote for the $15,000 also. Having listened to the rationale. I did want a stipulation that $1,000 be set aside for seasonal decorations. because of listening to some business owners who had expressed a desire that Main Street pick up some funding for that. I saw that in the past year, they spent about 815, I think it was off the top of my head, dollars on decorations. And I thought that was a reasonable amount that they spent in the past. So I was hoping to get about $1,000 set aside for decorations for seasons, but provide $15,000 also is where I had voted.
So the, the average is, everybody had a different number here. There were three at 15, there were two at five, and there was one at zero. And we, that comes out to an average of 916666, rounded up to 9,200. It seemed like a reasonable compromise to just take the average because everybody has their own speech to make, but I just wanted to see if it was unreasonable for, or if it's reasonable to go ahead with an average because there's another algorithm. If everybody wants to win their own number, then we're never going to get anywhere, but it, an average is a compromise, but there were three people at 15, there were two at five, and there was one at zero. And that comes out to 9,200, 916666.
But Mayor, there was no discussion and it was put out, let's do an average. And this is our opportunity to, to discuss. That's why.
I think that's why I just brought it up.
Let me finish this time. That's why Kelly asked for the opportunity to state that she wanted, for the record, to state she voted for 15. I want for the record, it's 15. If, and, and Robert and I even spoke on the phone. I know that he had wanted 20, but then having listened to them, he, he analyzed the numbers a little bit differently and came to the conclusion that he wanted the, the five. And, and I respect that. It's just, this is our chance to talk to each other.
I agree, Mr.
I agree.
And it was my turn. So I said, we came to the average situation, so we'll let everybody else speak if they want to. Mr. Path? No, Robert?
No, I think we've really had a full discussion on this budget item and we each have a different number we've come up with and, and it's time to move on. So, you know.
Is 9,200 okay with you?
9,200 is fine with me.
Mr. Path?
For, for going through the budgeting purposes, I'm absolutely fine with that.
So I, I had sent an email in response saying, well, I felt like the average is more 10,000, but I understand how you did it on the Excel spreadsheet because there were three at 15, two at five, one at zero. But then the true median of that with the zero, the way I did it was 6,666. But that's because I didn't count each person how many times. I just did the variation of the numbers. So I did include Path at zero and I did include everyone else, but I just, I, I struggle with this this year because I find it ironic that the most support the businesses have said they have experienced was through Main Street during this time of a pandemic and in general. They've had some of the best revenue they've ever received because of the effort of Main Street. So I did vote for 15,000 and I was comfortable with that number. I have not supported Main Street in the past, but that's because I have asked them to please provide the information as to their value. And the last two years, I struggled with finding their value. But this year, it wasn't just Main Street who showed the value. It was the businesses that showed the value to me. And so I think to take that away is absurd. And also understanding that they are, they are connected to the city. They are not their own independent branch. They are underneath us. They were formed by council. There is a connection there. And also I know that they have certain levels that they can succeed to, which in the past I wasn't even aware of that because this year's presentation was better than any previous year's presentation. They used to just come in, ask for the funding, council said yes, and they'd leave. And I'd say, but what are we doing? What are we funding? I don't understand. So now I understand it better and I'm more competent in my decision making. But the part that I see the success in is having individual businesses email, call and show up and say, we were supported by this organization more than any other. So I didn't hear anybody come in and say, hey, DDA really knocked it out of the park this year for us. We're really, really feeling the success of their ventures, but we're still giving them funding. They're still going to be included in the budget and they didn't have to come in and beg, borrow and steal for anything. So why does Main Street, why doesn't DDA have to show up to these meetings? So the thing is, is everybody sitting up here has talked about how are we going to help businesses during this pandemic? How are we going to support them? What are we going to do? And that's one way to do this. So I'm good with 15,000. If we can't come to a consensus, I don't know the right answer. But I don't want to give on it because I think it's the right thing to do this year. I think the community is asking us to do it and for us to just shove it back in their face and say no because there's some people pissed off about what happened on the board is completely inappropriate. And that is what's occurring. Because I've been the only council member in the history of council to never vote to support Main Street. Other people sitting up here have always avidly supported them and suddenly somehow some crap happens and now they don't want to give and it looks vengeful. It doesn't even look appropriate. And for the first time, we've got business and people coming in and saying, we want them, they help us, they are a benefit. And now we want to take from them. And it just doesn't make any sense to me. So I don't know how we'll come to a consensus, but that's what I have to say about it.
Yeah, we've, we've done this for an hour and 20 minutes before. Now we're going to go another half hour apparently. I'm, I'm looking for, the average is, is 9,200. You, we've got two people who support it so far, one absolutely against Kelly. I'm just looking for a way to give direction to staff so that we can move on from this topic and spend, and spend time on $12 million budget instead of smaller.
My suggestion is, Mr. Mayor, is that we handle it like we've handled a number of other things this evening in our agenda. And we leave it where it's been and then we deal with it through the budget process when we actually have a budget to work from.
So a compromise is not in your interest at this point?
No, thank you.
So we got two non-compromise votes. Rusty?
I, I would like mine to be $50,000. Please average it out. Average it out. That's my vote.
So, so we, we obviously have an impasse here. Mr. City Attorney, you had a suggestion.
So I talked to the mayor about this briefly this afternoon and one of the thoughts that I had, and I don't know based off the discussion, if this makes any sense, but we, we created some potential ballot opportunities for you to basically checkmark anything that you would be willing to support. And variations between zero to 15,000. And if there's, if there's multiple four votes on a single dollar figure, then we can move forward. If not, then we're kind of at where we're at. But that was under the, without the discussion this evening. So I don't know. Certainly we have those if you're interested in doing that as a way to try to see if there's four votes on a single amount or not.
It's basically a paper doodle poll.
Yeah.
It's like this.
But you know, from the original poll that was drafted, it was what was your dollar amount? And you, you were able to pick a single amount. And it didn't necessarily say you might not be able to be willing to go one way or the other. So the, the idea behind this is to, you know, you might be okay with 15, you might be okay with 1250 or 12,500, you might be okay with 10. And now you have the ability to see if there's any four votes across the board.
So check all that.
Check all that apply.
Yes. Thank you.
And from a statistical analysis, I'll just, just throw out that maybe median, we're going to have major outliers like $50,000. Then maybe we use median instead. But median is probably a better representation of if we have some outliers.
Well, if you do the math.
Nothing to get to Rusty.
Up to a $15,000 average.
That's kind of where Rusty, that's kind of where I was last week.
So I'll, I'll tabulate them real quick for you.
Well, this is a work session, not allowed to vote.
Well, it's just.
So I'm not going.
It's general guidance. You ultimately don't make the decision on this budget item until the budget's approved. So it's not.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor? Yep. I find it so fundamentally frustrating that we're spending so much time on this issue with platitudes and various emotive concerns about an organization which I think the executive director of does a fantastic job and I think it is useful and helpful. But we don't even want to consider a, consider a vendor fee refund when we're talking about helping businesses. I mean, it's just absurd. It was consensus among people not to even think about a vendor fee refund back to businesses to help them, but this becomes a big issue. I think it is fundamentally absurd that this council emotes over Main Street and cannot emote in any fashion to help this community with a vendor fee refund with a stupid proposal that was considered the last time we did this. It's just absurd. And I want that on the record for everyone to know. I just can't even believe it. We could do both and take care of the people in this community. So don't give me platitudes about how we want to help the businesses when we won't even want to consider something like that on a one year basis to help community, businesses that are suffering. It's just absurd.
So surveys in. And I don't want to put words in Councilmember Path's or Councilmember Zoolaga's mouth, but I'll, I'll take some liberty to say that a non-vote would be not supporting 15,000. I think is a fair bet.
I don't think so on my part. I have abstained from a vote.
Okay.
And I just expressed my opinion on the matter.
Certainly. So I guess in, in that light, we don't have any item that has four votes across the board. My point being is even if we added in two additional votes in any category other than the 15,000, there wouldn't be four votes in any of the amounts.
So clear guidance?
Here we try.
So clear, so I will ask, again, you, you, this is not a final decision tonight. Is it appropriate for council, for a city staff to put the 15,000 that was left in before this discussion? And when you come to a decision before December, you can make a final decision on that.
As the one who's provided the most criticism, put 15 freaking thousand dollars.
Okay.
Let's just, it, it just, this absurd that this council can't give you clear guidance. And that's to their detriment. So please put 15,000.
Thanks, Councilmember Path. That, that is, I think.
Yeah, we were suggesting to it at what it was.
Yeah, I'm conceding to the people who can't think about the vendor fee refund, but they can talk about helping businesses. It's absurd.
Okay, next is a public comment and we're, we're done with, we're done with the meeting. Is that what you're telling me? So, so the, no, we're not having public comment on the issues at hand. This is general public comment according to our council procedures. Ms. Case and I had a discussion about this.
Yes, and if there's, I'd be willing to listen to anything in the audience, that anyone in the audience would like to speak to. Because they've taken the time to come before us and if they have something they'd like to share with us, I'd love to hear it. Thank you.
And be productive and don't attack. I don't see anybody raising their hand. So this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you for coming, everyone.